Just give one more moment for Vice Mayor Salazar. He's just waiting to be brought into the meeting.
Um, I'm not seeing him. I... There's someone raising their hand and I'm gonna bring them in because I suspect it might be him.
Yep, that was me.
Okay, the name says a different name, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Okay. All right, Melissa, are we ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the San Bruno City Council Meeting of July the 28th, 2022 order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Mason? Councilmember Mason? Okay, she's here. Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Here.
Mayor Medina?
Here. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening?
One moment.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States.
United States of America. And to the republic.
And to the republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God. With liberty and justice for all. I know it's hard when we're all not here to be in sync together, so, but we did it. Okay, let's please move on to item number three, public comments for items not on the agenda. Individually allowed three minutes. As the council policy refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and or action where appropriate, the Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agenda as pursuant state law. So, do we have any speakers that want to speak on items that are not on the agenda this evening, please?
We have one speaker. Paul Wepensky, just one moment. Hi Paul, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Last meeting was brought up that we should have city employees clean up after the homeless people's encampment. Is there a log in so homeless picking up after themselves, or are they incapable? If they are, then they need to be off our streets. Just because you're homeless doesn't mean you can't clean up your trash. Why don't we drop a dumpster off and some cleaning supplies and let them dump their trash and clean up? Have someone from the city supervise it. Explain to me why we should endanger city employees' health and waste their time. Why doesn't the city find an occupied building like the senior center or school classroom put up some cost for them to sleep in? And set up rules for cleanliness? Letting people sleep on the streets is not humane or sanitary and is potentially dangerous for our taxpaying citizens who are already complaining or fearful. Last meeting was also, I brought up to the council to submit a proclamation in support of our police fire and mercy personnel and for the protection of the citizens and their property, and I don't see that on the agenda. I think the citizens will be reassured and calm and it might also shorten the long night at the gun shop that I see every day on El Camino. Because business is booming and as I support the Second Amendment, but I would prefer our police to keep the peace. I was also brought up, somebody brought up the idea of getting feedback for issues from the council. I second that. I think people get frustrated when we are able to talk, but we get no feedback to our comments or ideas. And I would ask the city attorney if the Brown Act prohibits the council from having an open agenda or forum meeting a couple of times a year for this purpose. And I also think that the council should have a briefing for the citizens each meeting on our financial status and revenue outlook. I think this is critical since we pay the bills. We're in a hole and our income prospects are not bright. Google just announced that they're not going to have people come back to work until July of 2021. I mean, that's a huge hit for the city since YouTube employees will not be around to spend their money here. And the other question I have regarding that is, are they still committed to their campus plan now that they aren't using it? Or, you know, their plans for the future? And lastly, I'd ask, why are the written comments that are submitted to the council with meetings not read into the record? Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next. We have, it just says Tim. One moment while I bring you in. Hi, Tim, can you hear us?
Actually, it's Raina.
Hi, Raina. Whenever you're ready.
Okay, yeah, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to bring two items that I wanna basically, for the city manager or whoever he can appoint. There is a lot of cigarette butts on the sidewalks from, especially on the apartment buildings. When I walk, I've been picking up a lot in those, on the streets. That will be on Taylor, on Chapman, on Mastick, wherever you, for the most part, where there are apartment buildings, the smokers just go there and don't basically have the courtesy to put the cigarette butts in a container. So, I was wondering if the city can enforce that from landlords to basically keep an eye on that? Second issue is 100 Sullivan, it's an apartment building facing Huntington. The widths are as tall as the building. So, is any ways the city can contact the landlord and basically keep someone in charge to keep that, yeah, that area nice and clean? The residents definitely deserve a better area, nice and clean. So, those are my two issues. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Raina.
I would like to speak as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tim.
Yes, please, thank you.
Melissa will let you know and, thank you.
All right.
Hi, Tim, whenever you're ready.
All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. Just have a concern about the Huntington Avenue between Sylvan and San Felipe and also down the San Antonio Road. I know there's different jurisdictions, the city, Caltrain, Bart. And I just would like to see some accountability on their part on keeping it clean. I know we just had some construction done, the sewers replaced, water lines replaced. And it's just leftover debris from that. There's a broken light post. I believe that belongs to Caltrain and it's just left there. It's very, a major eyesore and it's ongoing. We've, numerous residents have reported it to San Bruno Responds and it doesn't look like anything's been done. There's been no response. So, I would just like to see that, a maintenance, a regular maintenance cleaning schedule for that area, please. We've been asking for a while now and it's an eyesore. And it's just, I think, I don't know what the challenge is for the city or for the other Caltrain and Bart, but something needs to be done, please. The residents deserve a clean street. Thank you so much.
How about Tim?
Okay, and next, I believe it's Von Gregory, just one moment. Von, while I bring you in. Hi Von, can you hear us?
Hi, I can hear you.
Okay, whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you. Good evening. My name is Von Gregory. I'm a resident on Green Avenue. I wanted to thank, thank the city council, the police department, city manager, and a huge thank you to Public Works for all your efforts last Thursday in cleaning up the garbage from the homeless encampment at Forest Lane Park. The garbage cleanup of the park is a step in the right direction, but the encampment remains there as well as under the 380 freeway at Huntington Avenue, at 380 and Cherry Avenue with campers and cars and other sites in San Bruno. The issue of this homeless living on Forest Lane Park has been going on for the last 30 years and neighbors have been upset about it for just as long. Now, however, the situation has changed from just a homeless problem to a COVID-19 health and safety issue for neighborhood residents. Human waste is accumulating in the park. The encampment residents freely walk throughout our neighborhood without masks. The folks living in these encampments have refused services that the county has offered through Life Moves, preferring instead to inhabit public spaces. In the case of Forest Lane Park, it's provided by the city for enjoyment of children and families to recreate, exercise, and enjoy a small outdoor space. Neighborhood parents understandably refuse to take their children to this deplorable, stench-filled park. It's no longer a neighborhood play space. It's a location for drugs, drinking, and disgusting behavior towards neighborhood residents. Imagine bringing your own children to Forest Lane Park for a playdate. The city, county, and CDC have asked residents to put up and shut up during the pandemic due to the concern for health and safety of police officers and workers of Caltrans and other agencies trying to provide support services. It's been suggested that portable toilets and wash stations at Forest Lane Park be provided to help keep the park cleaner. I believe this solution will only encourage stubborn individuals to hang on even longer. We've been asked to be compassionate towards the less fortunate. However, the homeless individuals feel a sense of entitlement to take over the park as well as other public spaces they've inhabited. How long should the community have to put up with this? I implore our elected representatives and appointed officials to act on behalf of the residents of Forest Lane Park neighborhood and all San Bruno residents and continue working to truly rid the city of San Bruno of homeless encampments and to set up a plan and a timeline for safe removal of all encampments in San Bruno. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Next, please.
Next is Nicola Alvarez, Nicola Bosco Alvarez, just one moment. Hey Nicola, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Okay, hi, so thank you again for letting me speak. I did speak last week as well, or at the previous meeting. And I am a resident of San Bruno. I live on Hensley Avenue. And I do appreciate all of the help and the efforts of the city and the police, again, to help try to correct the problem of the encampment here. I do understand that there was an attempt to clean up. I think, I think it was maybe a Wednesday, a couple of weeks ago. And it didn't really make much of a difference, I will be honest. It is at the end of the block where I live. And so, I've, this has become a thoroughfare for not only people riding bikes unmasked, as the woman before me said, people come through here unmasked, but also there's cars that go speeding through here that are going to the encampment. I see a lot of cars that sit at the end of the block there at Huntington Park and there's people gathered, unmasked. And recently, I found on Euclid Avenue a large black garbage bag filled with plastic bottles filled with urine. And there's also a concern, not only about the human waste, but also just the lack of respect for, for the people that live in this neighborhood. So, I have had things dumped in front of my house, liquids of whatever kind, and also things put into my garbage, which I don't necessarily think are my neighbors. But there are things that are put into my garbage cans that I did not put there. And just speeding and a lot of, a lot of activity that is, that is questionable. So, I appreciate the efforts of the city, but I think that this problem is, you know, pretty large. And I think that the residents here have voiced so much concern, not only about health and safety, but also about how can we, I understand they have, they have rejected services, some of them, but it is, it's certainly a concern for how all of us here as residents live on a daily basis. So, thank you. I appreciate you giving me the time.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Alvarez. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody else in the queue. So, we're gonna move on to announcements and presentations under item four. First one up is item A. Work on the wildfire mitigation project has commenced in the Crestmore Canyon area. The first of three phases of the work in the canyon began on July 22nd. All three phases are expected to be completed by fall 2020. This work includes the creation of defensible space between open space areas and neighboring residential properties, which is essential to improve a home's chance of surviving a wildfire. This work also serves as a preliminary fire safety effort. The structures, while with long-term plans for the further mitigation are developed. Please contact the San Bruno Fire Department at area code 650-616-7096. That's 616-7096 with any questions or comments. Was there anything else for city manager on that, or just? City manager?
Sorry, we were on mute. No, Mr. Mayor, that's everything.
Okay, let's move on to item B. If, if you don't complete your 2020 census, you won't be seen, you won't be heard. And our nation's, as you know, it happens once every 10 years. And it is still open and it has been extended due to the COVID situation. So, please fill out yours today at my2020census.gov or by calling 844-330-2020. That's 844-330-2020. Now, I'm gonna move on to item C and ask the city manager to take that, please.
Sure, just want to announce to the community, some members may remember that the property owner of 1,000 San Mateo Avenue, that is the former Sky Park facility, approached the council a few months ago with the option to look into a potential November 2020 ballot measure to increase allowable heights on that property above ordinance 1283. The, we have currently received a property owner termination for that reimbursement agreement that the city council authorized. The property has been sold to a large commercial tenant and the prior property owner and the current property owner no longer want to proceed with that potential ballot item. And so, we will be awaiting contact from the new property owner on their intentions for the property.
Okay, thank you for that. Item D, the regular city council meeting for August 11th, 2020 is canceled. That's a normal practice and there will be the meeting, I believe it's August 23rd. That will be our regularly scheduled one. And also, as I'm going through these, why don't we go ahead and ask my colleagues, as I'm going through these very quickly, but were there any questions in regards to the mitigation or the announcement of the property? I'm sure there's not more, if there is, if you can let me know. Councilmember Davis?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask staff, was there any type of notification that went out to the residents in the Crestmore neighborhood regarding the fire mitigation work that was being done?
Yes, Melissa, will you bring in the fire chief for that notification?
Yes, I'm doing so right now.
Good evening. Honorable Mayor, yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, so in regards to notification for the Crestmore Canyon fire mitigation work, we had done a multitude of venues to be able to provide notification to the residents. We did a direct flyer that was placed on all the residents along Crestmore Canyon and Quail Point, the initial starting point where we started the fuel mitigation project. We had done all three social media platforms. We use Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram for notifications as well and some door-to-door notifications as well.
Okay, so that, there was just, was there a door-to-door notification that went around the perimeter of that property that would have been into people's backyards?
Exactly, the, the properties off of Quail Point and the initial stuff in Crestmore, the initial phases of, we didn't do every single resident because every single resident wouldn't have been affected. But, I can't hear you.
You're muted. I'm hitting it back and forth, I'm sorry. Will there be additional notification for those residents to kind of live in the area? Because, you know, majority of our residents aren't on social media and they don't, they don't log into council meetings as we think they may. But, so it would be really nice just to know that they know what's going on.
Absolutely, we, we wanted to get some boots on the ground to get some work started. So, we noticed the initial wave of the residents in the primary spot where we're gonna be working. But we have, we're gonna have about a two to three week window coming up here before the next phase of work. And the plan is to actually notice every one of those with a mail piece from the fire department as well.
Perfect, thanks so much.
Absolutely.
Okay, not seeing.
Oh.
Yes?
One follow-up comment, I was just gonna say, city manager, maybe if it's something in your newsletter about the work because now, it's great that all this is happening, but somebody says, well, I live over here, what about my neighborhood? And I live over here, what about my neighborhood? And so, there's, those questions are starting to fall.
Absolutely, Councilmember Davis, that is planned. And in the July issue, we will have a article on the wildfire mitigation project that will articulate the plan for the entire $3 million that was funded by PNE and talk about this first phase and then the phase that Ari mentioned, Phase Two, that will begin in a few weeks.
Okay. And when we say funded, that, that, there's a little more behind that, but I'm sure that'll be explained in that. It's not that they just was, were generous in a sense and just gave it its, by staff and us going and asking the federal judge in which to convert probation hours for the offense that they were convicted of to be utilized to help that community and neighborhood mitigate those situations that they've lived with for a long time. Item E, receive update on COVID-19 response effort. Jennifer D.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Jennifer Dionis, I'm the assistant to the city manager. I'm here this evening representing our emergency operations center, public information team, and will provide a general update on COVID-19 to you. As you can see from the agenda on the screen, the presentation this evening will include a snapshot of San Mateo County statistics similar to what was presented at the last city council meeting, an update on the current status and where we are now, as well as local resources available to our community. I'll start this evening with our San Mateo County statistics. The statistics on the screen are provided by the County of San Mateo Health Department. In San Bruno, the county reports that there are 225 positive COVID cases and increase of approximately 40 cases since the last report to you on July 14th. Countywide, there are a total of 5,198 positive cases as of yesterday, July 27th, and a total of 118 deaths. The last time I reported to the city council on July 14th, there were 114 deaths and increased to four deaths over the last two weeks. You will see in the category titled death by age group, a majority of the deaths are in the 80 to 89 and 90 plus age ranges. The positive cases, however, appear to be mostly in the 20 to 49 age ranges. The state uses the county statistics to evaluate counties and their COVID-19 containment. The statistics are monitored in three-day increments, meaning that the state identified categories must fall within the prescribed guidelines for three days or else they will be subject to further restrictions and closures, which I will detail in the next few slides. The monitoring categories include stable hospitalization of COVID individuals, testing positive over the past seven days, the number of cases per population, minimum testing requirements, hospital ICU bed search, and ventilator availability. That brings me to the current status and where we are now. But before the transition, I want to mention that the county health statistics can all be accessed through the county or the county health websites, primarily at smchhealth.org. There's a variety of data available for general consumption. As previously reported, our county remains aligned to the state's resilience roadmap. San Mateo County is the only Bay Area county that remains off the monitoring list at this time. However, given the statistics I mentioned earlier, our county has potential of being added to the monitoring list and staff suspects that that action is looming. As previously mentioned, according to the state, counties that have remained on the county monitoring list for three consecutive days are required to shut down the following businesses by category or activity unless they can be modified to operate outside or by pickup. And those include gyms and fitness centers, places of worship and cultural ceremonies, offices for non-critical infrastructure sectors, personal care services, hair salons and barber shops, as well as shopping malls. If, and I highlight the word if, the county is added to the monitoring list, you can expect a message to be sent through the emergency notification system, that's SMC Alert, which will notify our county's residents of the change. There's a link to SMC Alert at the end of this presentation that can be used to register for the notification system if you're not already registered. The PIO team is also prepared to help get the information out. And it's important to note that the City of San Bruno Emergency Operations Center continues to operate and regularly needs to ensure support to our community for information, programming, and other emergency response needs. In line with our statistics, San Mateo County Health Officer Dr. Scott Morrow issued a new health statement on July 20th, which highlights three main points that I'm gonna read for you. First is the virus appears remarkably and even surprisingly transmissible. The fundamental structural failures of the US economy are being laid bare by the pandemic, including economic struggle and impact for those that live paycheck to paycheck. And third, complacency being another major factor enabling the spread of COVID-19. At the close of the statement, Dr. Morrow reminds residents that they should not have gatherings outside of their immediate households, should use facial coverings or masks extensively and adhere to social distancing. The full statement is available for your viewing on the county health website. Again, that website is smchhealth.org. Tonight, I share resources with you that are available to our residents. And the resources I mentioned this evening are mostly available through our county, County of San Mateo. There are several other resources that are available through the state and other agencies that are offering services to those in need. So, I do not want to limit what resources are available as this presentation only highlights a few of them. I'll start with eviction moratoriums. For those that are economically impacted as a result of COVID-19 and unable to pay rent for their place of residence, the county has extended an emergency moratorium on eviction for non-payment of rent through August 31st, 2020. The temporary countywide moratorium on evictions from residential units may provide temporary relief during the pandemic. Information about this and landlord tenant rights are all available through the county website, smchdub.org, and the Department of Housing. Similarly, the City of San Bruno has taken action for a moratorium on commercial evictions. The city initially adopted a commercial eviction moratorium, which was effective until May 31st and was then readacted extending that moratorium. There's an item on the consent calendar this evening for your consideration to further extend the urgency ordinance of the temporary moratorium on evictions for non-payment of rent by small business commercial tenants impacted by COVID-19. Upon your consideration approval and approval this evening, the moratorium on commercial evictions will be extended through September 30th, 2020. Also, on economic relief, there is a childcare relief fund that was established through the county. The new childcare relief fund serves two goals, to help service providers remain open and to ensure working families have access to childcare. The program offers licensed childcare centers and family childcare homes and opportunity for grant funding with priority funding for providers who serve low-income families. As you can see on the screen and in this PowerPoint presentation, the program the program implementation process will begin by early September, at which point applications will be collected, reviewed, and grant funding will be distributed through the county. More information on this program should be forthcoming through the county. In addition, it's worth noting that the City of San Bruno is offering a variety of virtual camps this summer in case you're looking for something to keep your children busy with during the summertime. These are all worth checking out and are available under the recreation program on the city's website, and that's sanbruno.ca.gov. Small business support has been a major focus that we've navigate, or that we have navigated through these COVID-19 waters. There are resources and programs available through our local San Bruno Chamber of Commerce, SAMCDA, and a variety of other agencies. But most recently, a webinar was hosted by the county health office and SAMCDA as a joint effort regarding the signage requirements for businesses while in operation, including a self-certification placard, social distancing protocol, and a health and safety plan. Signage is available for print on the county health website, as well as frequently asked questions or FAQs for business categories that have regulatory compliance through the state. On the screen, you'll see the self-certification placard, which should be displayed in business windows alongside the protocols to easily demonstrate or acknowledge their compliance to the general public, so it's easily identifiable. This next slide you'll see should look familiar, it was presented during the last city council update. However, the information still stands true and is available to the public. Pre-COVID-19 testing is available in San Bruno this weekend next. That's Wednesday, July 29th tomorrow, and next Wednesday, August 5th, both from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM at 975 Speed Lane. Registration is required and fills up quickly, so if you're a family member interested in getting tested for COVID-19, please visit projectbaseline.com/covid19 to sign up for the San Bruno site or consider alternative sites in our county if San Bruno registration is already full. This process is for pre-testing, however, testing may also be available through your private healthcare provider, which could be used as an alternative option to explore. And, and while testing for COVID-19, finding out that you or a family member tests positive for COVID-19 can be stressful, and particularly if you're facing the loss of a loved one due to COVID-19. American Red Cross offers the Virtual Family Assistance Center, which provides information and resources during times as such. Immediate emotional support, including the availability of services in a variety of languages, are available by calling 833-492-0094. And by connecting with the American Red Cross online at redcross.org, which is linked in this presentation for future reference and convenience, you have access to volunteers that can help navigate other resources to get what you need when you need them, including emotional support for behavioral health, spiritual care, and health services. The next slide here is a friendly reminder to properly dispose your personal protective equipment, also known as PPE. I think I'm not only speaking for myself when I say this, but oftentimes, unfortunately, I observe a disposable mask or glove on the ground while I'm outside walking. Each time I make that observation, I would like to believe that someone did not intentionally throw their PPE on the ground to litter, but possibly lost it. Please remember to protect yourself and also our environment by making sure you properly and responsibly dispose your PPE in a safe manner, or use the option of cloth masks, which are reusable and sustainable. And for those of you that have not already seen the county's comeback campaign, please see the heart image on the screen and in the presentation. The county is in the process of rolling out a comeback campaign to help stop the spread of COVID-19 with three simple reminders, which we often see, wash your hands, wear a mask, and social distance. Their slogan is "Our comeback depends on all of us" and reiterates the need for us to come together to slow and ultimately stop the spread of COVID-19. You will soon see several state campaigns with a similar message on TV and on the radio, and the message is clear that we all need to do our part. And lastly, as a reminder this evening, please stay connected with us as information develops with the monitoring list or any other information. Our PIO team uses a variety of methods to get information out to the public, and social media and the SMC Alert Emergency Notification System are great resources to help get information out quickly. If you or someone you know are not already connected, please encourage them to do so. And also, all of the websites and phone numbers that I referenced in the presentation have hyperlinks, and they're all available on our city website, on the council agenda page, as well as our coronavirus page. And with that, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the time this evening. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Councilmember Mason.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I actually had a question about the canyon mitigation, but since we're on this, I felt you will jump in. I just wanted to ask two, two questions. One is around, what is the outreach and what's the update around the Hispanic community? I know on the county call last week, it was evidence that I believe they make up 25% of San Mateo County, but over 50% of all COVID-positive cases are being impacted. And we have quite a large population here in San Bruno. So I'm curious to know what outreach is being done, or is the City of San Bruno doing anything to try to make sure that communications are in Spanish? That's my first question. Do you want me to ask the second one, or do you want to, should I let you answer first?
Thank you, councilmember Mason. So the city did establish a COVID-19 section of our website that is fully translatable in Spanish, as well as a number of other languages, as well as our entire site. With regard to the COVID-19 mellor that we melled out while we did not mell in English and Spanish version, we did develop a fully Spanish version of the mellor. Early on during COVID-19, there was a 211 established, which I believe is still active, and they have services in multiple languages, including Spanish. And the county has an entire outreach effort, as you mentioned, geared toward the Hispanic community, given the significant positive rates within the Hispanic community in San Mateo County.
Yeah, I think as of last Wednesday's call, they were working on one. I don't know that they've announced what it is yet. I did contact the county and I did send them our video, thinking maybe they can do a similar video on the, on the Spanish-speaking channels. But I don't think that there's a, a strategy yet that I've heard. So, so if there, I guess tied to that, is there any way that we could provide our social media posts that are related to COVID, not, not all posts, but related to COVID safety? Could we have those snippets available in Spanish as well?
We can look at, we can look into doing that and adding that as an augmentation.
Okay, thank you. And then I did just want to comment that we, as of our last city council meeting, we had, we had not received a list of all of the businesses that received funding. And since then, I wanted to thank, thank you for providing them to us. And I was really happy to see some of our small mom-and-pop shops, like Vibo Music, Takeria San Bruno. There was another, the Family Dentistry in San Bruno, My Busy Town, these all got these grants. I was surprised to see Lucky Food Express. Is Lucky Food Express considered a small business for, for the purposes of this grant?
Councilmember, I don't have details on their submission, an application to the San Mateo County Strong Fund, so I don't have any.
Okay, I can send an email to the person who sent it directly. Thank you, otherwise, thank you for all the work you're doing around COVID.
Any other questions by council? Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. So I guess this is a good opportunity to talk about the homeless encampment? Or no? Oh, you know what, I'm sorry, it's the next item on the thing, so I will wait.
Okay. Any other?
Can I back up if we're, if we're going to move up? Because I just had a question about the canyon.
Sure.
Okay. My only question is, are, is there a schedule that will be provided to the council to make sure that we meet these three phases? Like, is there a timeline that will, that will be provided in writing so that we know the metrics of, that we're trying to meet to stay within the budget?
I would think, I know we have to bring the chief back in, but I'm sure, chief, whatever you're sending out to the community on the phases, that, that can also be provided to council and the senior leadership team, correct?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, we have a detailed schedule, it's pending court approval currently, but once that's established, we'll get that out to you as soon as we can.
Right. And in addition, there are a couple of different components of the $3 million project. What the fire chief is referring to is the 3C contract with the California Conservation Corps. And I believe two council meetings ago, the city council approved that contract and submission to the court for reimbursement. It's approximately $600,000 with funding to do fire mitigation around the entire mouth of the canyon each year. And so that $600,000 amount is enough for five years. And so we are acting this year on a two-phase plan. Phase one begun and was just completed, and then phase two, the city attorney will be submitting documents to the court for reimbursement and approval, and that will begin, as the fire chief said, within two to three weeks. The other phases that involve other fire mitigation enhancements in the county are still pending development and require a CEQA California Environmental Act clearance process. And the planning for that is still ongoing, and so we do not have a detailed schedule for that at this time.
And I do want to thank the chief too, because obviously, moving on the, the 3Cs because of the CEQA not being required, but moving forward on that so that that can be initiated was appreciative, thank you. Councilmember Davis.
Hi, apologize, I actually did have a question, and it's actually kind of an important question. You know, a number of the counties are actually starting to put in enforcement of a violation with not wearing a mask. I'm not sure if the staff has heard anything about the county going in that direction. I know we, as a city, cannot institute that because we don't actually have a public health officer. But we, we know, I mean, there's a lot of studies that show that masks really do help. And seeing that we're teetering on our numbers in terms of increases and I'd hate to be on that watch list again and see the businesses close up. Is there a potential that that can be coming to our county as well?
Councilmember Davis, I'm not aware of any conversations at the county at this point to do a countywide fine or penalty for, for masks. There are actually two mask orders that are in effect in our county. One is a statewide order that was issued by the governor, and then the other is a county order. There are some nuances, but it essentially encourages masks to be worn at all times, in outdoors, when you're within six feet of each other, as well as indoors. There are a number of exemptions and caveats to those recommendations, and some of them actually make enforcement almost virtually impossible. For example, walking is considered exercise and walking outside when you're not within six feet of another person, or not within, or outside of six feet of someone within your household, you technically do not, the guidance no longer applies. And so it sort of makes enforcement challenging, but there is both county and state guidance on wearing masks.
Okay, I think it was Contra Costa County that just was added to the list, as well as Napa and Marin County, I believe. But, I mean, for those of you who don't know or experience this or have family members, when it hits, it hits quick and people go quick. We're continuing to see and hear people who are getting it, family members who are currently suffering, and reach the maximum where, you know, their, their capacity to continue to breathe on their own is, is, is not possible. So, I mean, we as a community need to keep each other safe and residents safe, and we know that the numbers are increasing in the valley. And people travel, people are traveling more, so I just highly encourage our residents to all please wear a mask and to encourage those who are not, to educate them. And you can't tell anybody what to do, but to help educate, but it's, it's, the numbers are growing and the, I know it doesn't seem like a lot, and I, it's so happy to hear the numbers that you presented, Melissa. And by the way, excellent presentation. But numbers throughout California are increasing, and they're hitting California pretty hard.
Any other questions for Jennifer? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to our next item. Update on Forest Lane Homeless Encampment, city manager.
All right, one second, getting the PowerPoint set up. Good afternoon, mayor, members of the council, and the public at home. Javon Groban, city manager, and I will give a brief presentation and update on the Forest Lane Homeless Encampment. And why don't we begin, why don't we begin with a little background? So the west, the, sorry, we're getting a little feedback here locally, that'll, that'll be taken care of. The encampment is located at the western edge of Forest Lane Park. It, in its current configuration, has been in existence since early March, just before the start of the shelter and place order. The encampment in question, the one located on the far western edge of Forest Lane Park, has approximately one to three occupants that fluctuates. But it's also frequented by other individuals experiencing homelessness, and so the community may very well see more than three occupants there at a given time during the day or in the late night hours. The encampment is located currently on property owned by two agencies, both Caltrans there at the entrance to 380 and the City of San Bruno, just at that western portion of Forest Lane Park. And increasingly, there has been calls for service and complaints for a variety of items, debris in the roadway, public disturbances, and various public health and safety concerns, and not to mention a significant accumulation of trash that we will talk about shortly. Next, I just want to let the community know about some of the services and outreach efforts that have taken place by both county agencies and the City of San Bruno. And on this slide, I provide two high-level examples. One is what we commonly refer to as the HOT team. It's our homeless outreach team here in San Mateo County. The vendor and provider for that is a company by, by the name of Life Moves. It is a countywide resource, but also here in San Bruno, we have a dedicated homeless outreach worker that is funded by Measure K from Supervisor Dave Pines' district funds. And so for this particular encampment, there have been 66 visits since March 1st, providing services, both coordinated entry assessments, and that is the county's process for coordinated entry into all of the permanent housing resources. There's a prioritization process and there are certain criteria. And the first thing that our outreach workers or our police department does is make, make a referral to the coordinated entry system, and Life Moves has the ability to do that intake right out in the field. And so they get people in the system. Next is they provide short-term shelter, not just your typical shelter, but other short-term housing options. And during COVID-19, housing vouchers have been made, made available and offered to members of this encampment. Medical services, there is a street medical team that has come out to this encampment, as well as mental health services and other, what we typically call wraparound services just to support all of the various issues that may cause someone to become homeless. The HOT team also has within their toolbox The HOT Team also has within their toolbox a category that is commonly referred to as immediate aid. They provide food, hygiene kits, medical assessments, can do referrals, clothing, blankets, and other items needed for really some immediate on-the-spot assistance. And at a high level, I want to let the community know that there's been some success stories from this very encampment. And so two individuals were provided and went into hotel vouchers, and one individual has been permanently housed from this encampment. And anyone that's familiar with, with homeless outreach knows that it is intensive outreach. It sometimes takes dozens and sometimes hundreds of contacts before someone avails themselves of the services. And it's truly mission work and, and work that takes time to build down, to build that trust and break down some barriers to have people avail themselves of services. And sometimes people choose not to for a variety of reasons. Next, our, our police department has a Support Services Bureau, as well as our Patrol Division. And to this very encampment, there have been over 100-plus visits since the shelter in place order since March 17th. And so an encampment that is the largest encampment in the city and requiring significant attention. Trash and debris removals. So to this, at this date, the city has conducted approximately six full-scale cleanups of the encampment. And there is an increasing amount of debris, both in the roadway and on city property and on Caltrans property. And the damages you see there from the last cleanup that was completed on last Thursday, July 23rd. And what you're seeing there is two weeks' worth of accumulation. And right now, we are currently, have entered a bi-weekly schedule, having previously been on a roughly monthly schedule for cleanups. But there's a significant accumulation of debris that occurs. And the city certainly recognizes the quality of life impacts that this poses on users of the park and in general residents of our community and certainly the neighbors right near this encampment. County services for the unsheltered population. So as a city, we partner with the county. And the county Human Services Agency is the lead agency for providing wraparound services for homelessness in San Mateo County. And I just want to update the, provide a quick highlight to the community on some of those services. So we talked a little bit about HOT Team, but they, those are the individuals that go out and assess and work with encampments. There's street medicine and healthcare for the homeless. There is integrated medicated assistance treatment, commonly referred to as IMAT. And that is treatment for substance abuse disorders. And it's a, it's a treatment that really begins with a progressive approach to address both substance abuse by both behavioral and medical interventions, a program that is having success at the county. The next group shown there in green are core services, core service agencies. And in San Mateo County, there are eight core service agencies that provide food, housing assistance, short-term rental assistance, deposit assistance, mortgage payment assistance to help those that may be approaching entering homelessness, hopefully to avoid homelessness and to help those to exit homelessness by providing deposit assistance. And they also provide utility bill assistance to help low-income people pay their utility bills and avoid entering into homelessness for financial reasons. And there are eight areas around the county, and these eight agencies, the county contracts for, and residents of San Bruno can avail themselves of all of those services. And at the bottom there, there in gray are emergency shelters. And again, during COVID-19, more emergency temporary shelter options have been made available in the way of hotel vouchers. And there is a recent program from the state that is providing counties with money to purchase hotel sites and convert those hotels into shelter for the homeless. And the county is looking into that program and will be exploring an application. The next slide, just wanted to talk a little bit about the increase in services available to our homeless population during COVID-19. There has been an increase in homeless prevention and emergency assistance to prevent new entries into homelessness. We've talked a little bit about the, the short-term temporary assistance. There's a, there, the county is maintaining their focus on increasing exits to homelessness. There are a variety of different ways that individuals can exit homelessness. Sometimes it is permanent housing placement, short-term housing, or even a homework bound program where there's money provided to help individuals return to their family that may be located in other areas. There's additional rehousing assistance and support programs. And what that is typically refers to is rapid rehousing. If someone enters homelessness, there's a program where they can be provided with immediate assistance to have them, to help them be rehoused, to prevent them from becoming homelessness and turning into, and developing more challenges from systemic homelessness. The county collaborates across departments and across cities to reinforce the need for affordable housing, leveraging funds like our Affordable Housing Trust Fund with money available at the county to provide new affordable housing. And the county continues to prioritize new housing units for homelessness and special needs population. The one thing I also want to say about COVID-19 and the public, and certainly the, the public around the Forest Lane Encampment will remember, is that the city mailed out a COVID-19 guide to all residents in San Bruno. And within that, we talked about homelessness in COVID-19. And we said a few things. We said, one, the shelter in place applies to both the housed and the unhoused, and that is true. And there's also CDC guidance that encourages cities to keep homeless encampments in place and suggests that removing homeless encampments may not be in the best interest of the public health. However, I want to make that clear that that is not a prohibition against removing encampments that pose a significant public health and safety risk. And so we are currently in the process of documenting the significant public health and safety concerns with this encampment. And now I want to turn to next steps. The city intends to continue our extensive outreach efforts with the goal of having individuals in this encampment accept and avail themselves of the variety of assistance that has been offered, both temporary assistance, permanent placement, and the, the wraparound services that we've talked about. In addition, there is the immediate aid that the HOT Team provides, and we will continue to provide those. With regarding abatement of this particular encampment, it does present a significant public health and safety concern. And the, the city has begun the process to initiate an abatement of this particular encampment due to the unique challenges that are arising from this encampment. But I want to be clear, this is not a full removal of all homeless encampments in the area. We are addressing the specific health and safety concerns posed by this encampment through this process. And as I said there, and it's noted up there, there is an increasing amount of trash and debris. And right now, we are on a bi-weekly schedule just to keep the level of debris in the roadway and debris in the encampment at a moderately acceptable level. We will continue to address the quality of life concerns, and we will continue our partnership with other county agencies, both Life Moves and Caltrans. Should the public have a concern, the best avenue is SB Response. Submit a service request on SB Response for any non-emergency item. Staff does track all service requests and responds to them. I know sometimes individuals like to send emails, and that is one way to submit a service request, but sometimes that actually delays the entry of that service request into the dispatch system because that email needs to be received and then put in to the dispatch system. If a resident puts a request in SB Response, that is the fastest way to have a service request addressed. In particular, with this encampment, what the community should know is, your city is well aware of the situation there, and we are diligently working at this, at this very complex and challenging issue. And we know that it, it has created quality of life impacts on the neighborhood, and we are progressing through the necessary steps to address those quality of life, life issues while also being compassionate, offering services, and again, hopeful that the members of this encampment will avail themselves of those services. And I want to close with a video that was developed in-house by our city staff and a police officer. John Hampton worked diligently on this video to really articulate to the community what goes on when we are doing the intensive outreach and an encampment cleanup. And so the video you're going to see is from the cleanup that occurred just last Thursday. And as we drive that, it should pop up shortly.
If, if there's one thing I want people to do is, please don't pass judgment. Anyone watching this video, please don't pass judgment on a person just because they're homeless. Too many times, people get the stigma that just because someone's homeless is that they are a drunk, or they're hiring a kite, or that they have incapacitated mental issues that they can't take care of themselves. We have to personalize that and remember that these are people. These are people that are down on their luck.
Hi, my name is Scott Rogie, and I'm a police officer with the City of San Bruno. I am currently assigned to the Support Services Division and have been employed with the San Bruno Police Department since 1992. A couple of incidents, there was divorce. Once there was a death in the family, people lost benefits, the recession hit, and a lot of people became down on their luck and became homeless. Those words might not echo very far for someone living near an encampment, but right now, there is definitely a balance, a balance that the police department deals with, a balance that the city deals with. And that balance is the quality of life that an encampment brings to a neighborhood, coupled with the compassion of the plight of the homeless. Today, we are going to Forest Lane Park, and some of the difficulties that we have here is the fact that it is basically in two jurisdictions. One, it's the City of San Bruno's. And number two, it's, it's embarked off the I-380 east on-ramp. So now you have a state, you have a state agency and you have a city agency. It's basically smack dab in the middle. Just going to throw some of this? All right. All right.
I'm Officer Sherry Campbell, and I've been an officer here in San Bruno for going on 15 years. And since the day I started, this particular male has been on the street experiencing homelessness. He has moved from camp to camp, I don't know, consistently having the same challenges. He's been offered several services throughout those 15 years. He's making some progress now, but is still a few steps away from the cunning house.
Life Moves, which they're a homeless outreach program. What they do is they come out, they bring everything from hygiene kits to food vouchers, to water vouchers, to transportation vouchers. And their goal is to make sure people get long-term housing, and then also they're self-sufficient. And to you and I and people watching, might, self-sufficient might be something that's, we don't even think about, but for people who have lost everything in their lives, self-sufficiency is something that they, they need. And with Life Moves, who we're lucky enough to have a relationship with, they don't stop. Their heart's got to be this, this big because they do not stop. And a lot of times, they'll, they'll keep data, but literally, they will see people 60 to 70 to 80 times before something may or may not be done. Bottom line, what people have to realize is still a choice. It's, it's a choice that people have to make to want to get help. And again, like we discussed earlier, there's reasons, personal reasons, why people don't want the assistance. They don't want the help because they don't trust people. But again, it's something the homeless person needs to adapt to. A lot of times, people say, just offer it to them. Give them a shelter. Well, because of that trust issue, they don't want to go there. People don't feel well enough to go to a doctor, and it's all about learning that trust, about trusting someone where they feel good about going to a doctor. They'll bring out street medicine, and street medicine will go ahead. They will take vitals. They will assist in any prescription medications if need be. But it's just a way to help them get so that they're not sick, they're not spreading infectious diseases, and that they feel okay. I might have mentioned it before, but a lot of times, people, because they constantly move, they lose their driver's license, they lose their social security card, of which they need. So another thing that Life Moves offers is that they will literally take them down and bring them to the DMV and get them a driver's license. They will bring them to the social security office and get them a, their social security card. They will get them, as you saw earlier, street medication was here. But if, once they have that trust and they do entrust a doctor, they will bring them there and stay in the waiting room for them so that they have someone outside when they go ahead and come out, because they just, they need that sense of security or, you know, that advocate. So that's another thing Life Moves offers. Typically, we don't have as many entities helping us, but since a lot of the refuse is on the city street, we've got the streets to come out here, Public Works. And then when it's up into a park, we bring the Parks Department. We're back here at the encampment. Yesterday was a great day. We got rid of a lot of things through our partnerships, through our community. Unfortunately, what I found out through Life Moves today is that a couple of the homeless individuals did not make their appointment today. So we're kind of back down at square one. They are continuously working with them. We will continuously monitor the situation. And if there's any other things I can answer, or if you'd like to sit down and talk about this or anything else, please get ahold of me at the San Bruno Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Again, just a presentation and update. No, no action before the council, but a significant issue for our community, and we just wanted to provide an update. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. And before I turn it over to Councilmember Mason, did want to thank staff, the Public Works, the police, the Life Moves, all those folks that were out there on the 23rd that have been out there before. Before the 23rd, I know that some staff went out to do some cleaning and didn't feel comfortable or needed to come back to the, on the 23rd. And, and that's important, too. We need to know that our staff is comfortable in, in this task that they're trying to do in helping the community. But I did want to just really, first of all, before turning it over to Councilmember Mason, thank staff for the presentation, but thank the staff that went out there and did that cleaning and, and tried to help out. And thank you. And Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I understand that it's a really delicate balancing act between the safety of the staff and the quality of life of the residents, and then obviously ensuring that we're treating the homeless population humanely. I do want to ask what the plan is, though, moving forward. I want to make sure that we don't let the encampment get to this place again. I know that I personally visited the encampment on a regular basis, and it did continue to get worse even with the cleanups. And I think that there does need to be a very, a very clear expectation for the time being moving forward while we're, especially while we're in COVID and there's more hesitation. forward, especially while we're in COVID and there's more hesitation to move anyone, actually.
Councilmember, we are beginning the abatement process that may result in a involuntary move of the encampment. Typically, what actually happens is sort of pre-COVID, when the thresholds are met and there are significant public health and safety concerns, we go through the process and there's a voluntary relocation. That may very well happen in this case, but we will continue to be compassionate. We are monitoring the accumulation of trash and debris. Right now, the encampment is scheduled for a bi-weekly cleaning cycle. We have not moved that up to a weekly cleaning cycle, but we will continue to monitor.
Right, thank you. And I think for the members of the public who are watching, it's important to note that also, this site isn't just the homeless. There are people who are actually dumping garbage there, which is even more unfortunate because you already have the sanitation issue with those living there, and then on top of that, you have people taking advantage of dumping. So making it, I think, even more complex for the city to handle. So thank you for the update, and I'm glad to hear that there is a schedule moving forward.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you for that. Thank you for the video that was put together. It really does shed a light for those who don't understand the process, what the city has done, challenging the pieces. And I do care, I care for everybody in that situation, right? I care for those who are struggling with their own demons and their own personal life issues. And there are a lot of people who live one paycheck away from being homeless themselves. But with all that said, there's a cost to the city. So I know that originally, the county and the CDC was sort of like, "Don't touch them." It's more of a concern to move them. But you look at that, and you drive by it, and you hear it, and you see the pictures, you've got a fear for employees and the community that live near there. And so I think it is just unacceptable. And I don't see, I understand the solution, where we're going to get out there twice a week and go and clean that, but we're continuing to allow a problem to exist, and it's not going away, and it's just getting greater. So how do we really stop it? And it's my understanding that in order to be homeless and to be allowed to be on the street, we don't have a place for you to live. So we do, we're giving them the ability to take a hand and to find a place, whether it's temporary or long-term, and they're not taking it. So then there's all these concerns. I mean, let's imagine every single one of us, that this was next door to us, this was in our own backyard, where you have kids who now can't go out and see their friends and play, but they want to get on a bike and ride around the neighborhood. You're afraid of being able to go out and do anything, you're afraid of being able to go out in front of your own yard. Are they going to step on a needle? Are they going to step on some feces that were left behind? I mean, it's just all a nightmare. So I find it, as much as we want it, and I think we've been allowed, we've allowed this to continue to grow because we want to be compassionate, but where does it end? Because we want to be compassionate for people to spend millions of dollars on a home, to live in a neighborhood right next door to that, and work hard to be able to have the well-being and the safety of their own families. And I just, I think we need to do more. And I guess my other, so that's my comment, but my question would be, an additional question is, where's Caltrans part in this? And are they burdening some of the costs for this? And yes, I think we need to start with a voluntary process where they get to move on, or we start a process where we evict them from that location. And then the next question is, is how do we prevent them from coming back? Is there fencing that we can put up to block off areas that? I know we've had a pizza place that's been vacant for many years, and so there's that parking lot, and what can we do to really deter this? For the residents in the neighborhood, the city, I know has for years, worked on this neighborhood for many years. At one point, the park had barbecues, and we removed those because we knew that they were cooking there. And so what are all the things that we want to ensure that don't encourage them to set up camp and to set up a home when you live next to your neighborhood? So I appreciate staff bringing this presentation together, but I feel like we continue, we need to do more, and we need to find a way to eliminate that problem. It's just a lot of filth and a huge hazard, and I too am concerned, like most of our residents.
City Manager, did you have anything to the questions, or Councilmember Medina will be next?
So all the items that the council member mentioned about ways to prevent an encampment from reoccurring in that area. We will certainly work on fixing, once the encampment is no longer there, fix the fence that connects the city and the Caltrans property. Given the small patch of area and the road network, it's really not a really good way to fence off that area of the park. And we, with regard to partnership with Caltrans, we have a partnership with them. But statewide, Caltrans is not moving homeless encampments and doing their regular cleanup schedule. And so I can bring in the police chief to address that, I think he's in the room. But we can continue to work with them, we continue to have conversations, but we will continue to address what is on city property and articulate the challenges that are posed by what is on Caltrans property.
Councilmember Medina.
That was a really nice video. It exposes and explains a lot. And our city, our neighborhood near there, they have the compassion for people that are suffering through homelessness. It's just that they're also being subjected, not to just the encampment, but in over 15 emails from residents, besides the blight, the odors, the public drunkenness, drug use, people going up and down the street at night, fights, trespassing, verbal abuse and fear, the balance is out of whack. And I agree with what my colleagues have said, we have to figure out and to do something a little bit more. It's one thing to be homeless and to need a place, but the things that are happening in that neighborhood, we have to find a way to keep that from happening. And I know it seems overwhelming at first, but a key word that I picked up in our city manager's comments was thresholds. So what are those thresholds that trigger something to go from that's acceptable? What's a specific guideline that should be followed to allow an encampment to be in What about if people are visiting without masks, then the whole point of limiting the exposures is gone? So at what point, I guess basically it's this, at what point are there consequences? We've asked before for a dumpster, because there's a lot of labor involved with getting the backhoe and all of that, all expenses. There's a lot of workers there that are getting exposed to things that maybe if we know that it's going to be going on its way out, that we bring the dumpster until it's gone. Because will they use it? I don't know. Maybe they will. But we have to be prepared, because they're going to come back. We've seen it over and over and over again. And I know this is just a presentation, but I understand the mayor has something on his comments about a homeless position on the, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, the Ad hoc Homeless Advisory Committee, and maybe we can hear more about that. But I think we need to be more involved as a council. I understand staff doing all that they can, but I think we need some more additional guidance and some more discussion of what is going to be, what is legally allowed and what can we actually do. Thank you.
City Manager, do you have any comments, because Councilmember Mason has her hand up?
I understand the council members' sentiments, and there's a lot in there. I think at a high level, what I know, the council knows, but the public should also know, is that being homeless is not illegal. Sleeping in our city park is not illegal. And there's increasing landscape of laws, case law, and protections for our unsheltered population. And so there is not a specific threshold, and community complaints alone are not significant to remove an encampment. There needs to be documented public health and safety concerns in criminal activity. And one of the examples that I know in particular from a prior life is individuals say they're using drugs, drugs in their tent, that's their home. There are certain seizures requirements that apply to a homeless encampment that are similar to what applies to someone within their own house. And so oftentimes, it is very difficult for us to address the concerns that are raised by the community because there are legal considerations and case law that we need to follow to protect the city's interests. And so at this time, I can't give you a precise threshold of this is acceptable, but this is not acceptable. But what it really is, is ensuring that there is a documented public health and safety concern that the city has observed, has documented, and has the necessary background and information where we can say, "You know what? We have confirmed that this is posing a significant public health and safety concern." And unfortunately, that's heightened now in COVID-19 and with the CDC guidance. And so we totally understand the quality of life implications of this encampment. And homelessness is an extremely perplexing and challenging problem to solve. And there, we are extremely fortunate in San Mateo County to have the resources that we have to address this problem. The resources that this county has, it's not the same in every other county. But that doesn't mean that people will avail themselves of that resource, and it still requires that intensive outreach, sometimes dozens or hundreds of contacts, or that outreach worker making contact with someone on the morning after a very cold night, and then they finally say, "Yes, I will avail myself of the services that you've offered." And so it takes time, and it takes a lot of work, but there are success stories.
Councilmember Mason.
Thank you for that. I think I just want to make sure that we are talking about this particular encampment. We have other encampments that were mentioned, and I think that where I get concerned is where there is clear, I think, the order, I should say, around shelter in place is pretty clear, that health and safety concerns can be addressed, and eviction is one of those ways to address them. And there's obviously a lot more legalese around it, and we don't have to get into that. But I think that that's where, for me, I get concerned, is that we are not couching every encampment under this idea that we don't want people moved, that it's, it is their home, it's called shelter in place because we want people to remain where they are, we don't, and not everybody has a home. I understand all of that, and compassion is all of that. But for me, I think where we need to really start getting aggressive is when you have nonstop traffic going through our residential neighborhoods into our parks, many of our parks, which were, whose playgrounds have been closed to our kids for months, but we're allowing people to come in, essentially trespass, create a nuisance. They are literally leaving urine-filled bottles, I've gotten pictures of this, on the street. To me, at some point, it becomes a health risk, there's a sanitation issue that also is raised. It is a misdemeanor right now to not have a face covering. So I think that, I want to make sure that what we are doing is at least documenting what is happening vigorously. If it hasn't been done before, that it be done now, moving forward, because we have been receiving concerns around this encampment as it has grown for months. And so while, again, I definitely want to be compassionate, but I also want to make sure that we are addressing the issue and that we are talking to our residents who live directly across the street with little kids running around, because it's not a crime to be homeless. But at some point, we have to also be vigilant for the families that live there and that this becomes a true sanitation issue. Those pictures in the video, I think, are pretty clear. So that's all I have. Thank you.
I'm not seeing any more hands up, and I just, you know, it does have a complexity because it's state and it's city. We could take care of our piece of land, and then they could just move. One of the persons in the video I have met before, and that was when he lived elsewhere in the community and has moved around, and he's personally told me he's not prepared for two to three years to want to seek the help, be off the street. Right, wrong, or indifferent? The thing is, folks are trying to be hopeful. I know St. Bruno's does about 50 breakfasts in the morning. They used to have showers available, but that stopped at COVID. They have less folks that can stay there because of the spacing element, and they didn't have a lot that could, maybe eight, now they're down to about five or so. And on the state level, with governor's order, my understanding is from the captain of CHP, which is their jurisdiction, they have to validate that it becomes an extreme emergency and reaches a level now that has been dictated by the state. And then they have to have it go to his boss in Vallejo, and that boss in Vallejo has to have it go to Sacramento to a three-star in their command structure to sign off for these type of things. So this process has elongated everything. And so in essence, I think all of the colleagues are saying, too, compassion, yes. Do we have a heart? Yes. Has the neighborhood been very tolerant? Yes. But I think what it gets to is, we're unfortunately, we thought we probably wouldn't be sheltered in place at this point. Maybe we'd be seeing July and August, and we may be seeing this to the end of the year, potentially, if not longer, who knows? And I think that's the thing, where do you strike a balance of doing the right thing, but then at the same time, understanding what it does to, not just here, I know it's on Forest Lane, but there's other places. Was it Walgreens today, getting hand sanitizer? And there was a lady who stopped me about somebody who brought it up under public comment about another area. And so it is not just there, and so we have to try to balance that. I don't know, City Manager, if you have anything. I'm going to go to Councilmember Davis and then see if City Manager, if you want to conclude with anything, and then we'll move on. Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, just one final comment. I mean, clearly, it's not one or three people living there, because the amount of garbage that got accumulated is much greater than that. And I think what we're seeing, too, is just it's become a dumping ground. And that area is no different from any, of many areas in the lower part of San Bruno that people just think that they can dump in San Bruno. So one of the things we can do as a council, because that comment was made, too, is really a proactive approach against illegal dumping. Leaving notices where people think it's just okay to dump a mattress because I'm moving and leave it outside an apartment complex. We have really kind of an epidemic in San Bruno, and it's been going on for many years. So we need to be proactive, get the laws out there, the rules out there, leave notices, do more notification about an illegal process to educate the community. And we can all do our part in picking up garbage along the way where we see it. It's not uncommon for me to go out and grab a garbage bag and pick up garbage where I see it. I've been doing that for years. So maybe that's another thing, we as a community, help out our city with things with short staff, is you see it, try to be part of the solution. And we can do, like I said, as a city, start notifying, leave notification out there, drop notifications at properties where- at properties where garbage is being dumped. And this particular site is, you see garbage, you just want to add to it. If I guarantee you have a dumpster in front of my house, somebody would drive by and put garbage into it because it's a free for all. So we just, we have to stop it so we can't contribute to the additional mess that it provides.
Thank you. If nothing else from city manager, then we'll go on to our consent. City clerk?
Mr. Mayor, this is Ryan.
I apologize. Let's go to the, the person who's been quiet, but thank you for being there and yes, Chief Johansson.
Yeah, sorry, I'll be brief, but there were a couple of things I wanted to touch on that were mentioned, just to kind of clear some things up and clarify. First of all, I hope that nothing in the video or in any of this presentation came across to imply that there's a feeling that the residents in this area have not been compassionate. I think quite the opposite. The level of patience and compassion being demonstrated by the people who are dealing with this every single day is really quite staggering. So I think that it was more in the spirit of trying to shed a little bit of light on what it means when we use these catchphrases like that it's not illegal to be homeless. It's kind of important to understand the way that the courts have been interpreting that phraseology and what they're saying that it means. And essentially the courts are putting us on notice in law enforcement that it means that any kind of enforcement we conduct that is disparate towards the homeless community or that is not equally enforced across the board, but is sort of on the surface appears to be used as a tool to stop homelessness or combat homelessness is not lawful and is not something that should be engaged in. And this really makes things fairly difficult when it comes to addressing things that to the average citizen, they see in their neighborhood and want the police department to address, like dumping and quality of life issues. It doesn't mean that it's legal for them to do this, but the courts have sort of put us on notice saying, look, if you're not widespread traveling throughout the community, citing and arresting all citizens for these types of offenses and you're mostly enforcing it against the homeless population, then we're going to take exception to that sort of enforcement and determine that it is not fair and is disparate. They have further ruled and put us on notice that any enforcement that that puts a homeless person in a position where they don't have a choice because they are homeless is not okay. And this is where we get into trouble with things like urinating in public and defecating in public and dumping trash in public because the argument comes across that they don't have a home and they have no choice. And while these things are, you know, ridiculous to us as we're trying to combat these issues and certainly if they're in my community and on my street, I would feel very similar to how the folks in this neighborhood feel. These are the challenges we're dealing with and trying to think outside the box as to how we deal with the problem. And it really does put us in a pretty tight spot. So we try to follow these protocols. There's been a lot of talk about, you know, what, where do we draw the line? I think the reality is that there has been a bit of a line drawn and we have a pretty clear process for how we move forward with forced movement or removal of these encampments. And we do so within the law and we've done so multiple times in the city. The curve ball of COVID and some sort of conflicting health orders and some other entities that we normally partner with like Caltrans and CHP bowing out of the equation have just made it a little bit more difficult to navigate those waters in our current time. That being said, I think that the city manager made it pretty clear and if not, I'll reiterate here that we are moving forward with that process with this encampment because it is abundantly obvious that this presents a health and safety risk to the neighborhood and to the community as a whole that simply cannot be tolerated. At the same time, right, it's important to note that our whole focus is long-term housing because if we can't get there, this encampment is the same one that started on White Way. If we can recall how much push there was to move that. And the same one that was across from the public library for a period of time. And so they literally move from place to place, even when we go through this exhaustive and potentially liability exposing process of evicting or moving them, abating the encampment. Really nothing prohibits them from moving to another location and creating the same plight. So it's just very, very challenging. And I just wanted to express from the police department's perspective, how much I appreciate the patience of the community and of council, albeit it is understandably wearing thin. And just know that we're racking our brains day in and day out to try and combat this, but to do so in a way that protects the city and the interests of all those involved.
Thank you, chief. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. City clerk?
All items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested.
Is there anyone that wants to remove for a separate vote on any of these items? Councilmember Medina?
Like to pull item F. And just to comment and a reminder to the small businesses about item D. Think that would be appropriate.
Okay, just comments on both. Got it. Is there anything else?
I echo councilmember Medina. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything in addition? Seeing just those, that's D and F. Since it wasn't asked for pull, but just for updating or comment, we're going to go to D. That's extend the urgency ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on evictions for non-payment of rent by small business commercial tenants directly affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. And city, oh, the attorney or city manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you very much. This is an extension of an urgency ordinance that the city council previously readopted. And what this does is applies to put a moratorium and continue that moratorium in place until September 30, 2020 for all commercial evictions in the city of San Bruno subject to certain terms and conditions in the ordinance mainly applying to small businesses. So the city council has seen this ordinance, this is, I believe, the third time. And this is the first extension of it, it was readopted previously. And this would be in effect until September of 3030 unless the governor issues an order that changes that. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing nothing else, we'll go to, oh, councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I just had, I just had a question and I guess it's a request. Would it be possible to have like a webinar? I know the entrepreneur center is having as part of the funding, it received a number of training sessions. And I think it might be helpful because I have had a number of questions from various small businesses to have a webinar around this particular moratorium and how it impacts our businesses in San Bruno.
Councilmember Mason, we will take that suggestion back. Our community and economic development director did record a webinar just today with the chamber of commerce. And so that is a part of the tools that they are putting in their toolkit, but we will pass along your suggestion.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to item F. Adopt a resolution appropriating an allocation of $30,000 for a soccer field feasibility study from the Park and Louvre Fund. City manager?
I see the hand up by councilmember Medina. Is that a handbell? Your lord, okay. Sure. Members of the city council, the item 5F is adopt a resolution allocating $30,000 for a soccer field feasibility study, funding from the Park and Louvre Fund that has approximately $3.1 million in it. And so this $30,000 would be used for a soccer feasibility study conducted by a firm called WRT. The community may remember that firm, it was the same firm that conducted the downtown street skate plan. The scope of work calls for an analysis of San Bruno soccer field use needs. And this is all related to the potential reuse of the Crestmore High School site, a project that has been initiated by the San Mateo Union High School District on property that they own. I know the council and members of the public are aware that the fields for the former Crestmore High School site have been used for quite some time now by the soccer community for a variety of events. While the general plan requires that the athletic fields are maintained and in future reuse, there have been a number of conversations about exactly how that use will look in the future. And so what this soccer feasibility study will do is to analyze the future of soccer needs in San Bruno. It will work in collaboration with the soccer community and the soccer clubs that currently use Crestmore High School. They have actually already submitted their use needs and a summary of their pre-COVID-19 use of the fields. And so we have that data. And the analysis will also look at various other sites for the potential for new athletic fields. Really just as an option as the high school district currently has an RFP for developers. And we are anticipating that they may propose changes to the athletic fields. We want to be ready and have data available for the city council should those discussions happen. And the council knows that there is a city council subcommittee, a two by two committee comprised of Mayor Rico Medina and councilmember Linda Mason that have been meeting with the San Mateo Union High School District to talk about their plans, their goals, their objectives. No decisions have been made. And in fact, the need for this study arose out of the discussions with the high school district. It was initially envisioned that the high school district would pay for it. They declined, but in order to continue the work and provide the city council with the necessary information that they need, I am recommending that we move forward with the WRT study funded with $30,000 to look at and provide data for the city council for the eventual reuse of that site.
Any questions?
I have a follow-up question.
Yes, councilmember Medina?
So the use of the fields, will the analysis also look at the parking required for the participants attending playing, playing, playing soccer or just recreating?
There. It is currently going to look at field usage. There are a number of development standards with regard to what can happen on that site, specifically with regard to parking for the fields. That is a question that I'm not prepared to answer right now just because it requires sort of a detailed analysis of what the parking requirements will be for the site. And depending on the development envelope, that can change. But what I can say is while that will not be a part of this study, your city staff and the community and economic development are fully capable to do that analysis and provide that data to the city council.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I just wanted to say for the rest of the council that Mayor Medina and I have been meeting with the two members, as mentioned, from our city manager, Gregan. We do, well, I can't, I can't speak for Mayor Medina, but I believe that this is needed to really ensure that we are protecting the interest of San Bruno. Because as everyone knows, this property does not belong to us. And, you know, it's going to be, this will be an interesting conversation moving forward, given that. And this is the other part of my comment was that on August 4th, as councilmember Medina sent to us via email, there is a meeting coming up from the San Mateo Union High School District where they will be discussing the RFP. I believe they're going to be discussing the actual proposals received. So for those members of the public who are watching, that meeting is coming up. This is moving quickly and it's better that we get ahead of a decision being made with hopefully some options as opposed to waiting, not having any options and then not having the time to propose any options. So I am definitely in favor of this. Thank you. And I should also add a caveat that we may be able, and I don't actually remember because there's so many different sources we're looking at, I think between the meeting and the staff report. But we are going to be asking for that to be reimbursed in the future. We don't know if it will be, but we are hoping that the, that the $30,000 would be reimbursed. Thank you.
Councilmember Davis?
Has Park and Rec Commission been brought into this process? Are there any members representing that? I know as a Park and Rec Commission member, I want to say eight years ago, I could be wrong. Crestmore or the San Mateo Union High School District determined that is surplus property. They had a meeting about selling the property. It was a big uproar. I know we as Park and Rec Commission started talking about sites. One of the caveats we really talked about was not having a soccer field on land we don't own. You know, you could spend millions of dollars putting in a brand new soccer fields and you don't own it. So I know the, some of the sites that were mentioned in that list were also brought up and then decided that that wasn't a good option and really look at city owned property or property that could be owned by the city. So I would hate to, a lot of work that's already been put into it not be considered as well.
Sure, we'll make sure that the Park and Recreation Committee is consulted. One of the, very concerned about if there is soccer fields that are enhanced or built new on property that is currently not owned by the city of San Bruno. That topic has been mentioned and it is certainly, I think, the intention of the two councilmembers to make sure that, that are on the subcommittee, to make sure that that item is vetted. And it has been the subject of many discussions. And if there is new land to have it acquired and/or available in perpetuity through some agreement.
Thank you.
Yeah, and to what councilmember Mason said, yes, you can speak for me. The, because in our minds, the answer was no. The answer was not right now. And this is in regards to councilmember about the $30,000 reimbursement. They want to do it in a process down the path a little bit. I believe, the councilmember and I believe that we as a council and the staff needs that information sooner. And we need to be able to provide information to them and to the council to make those type of decisions. So, and to councilmember Davis, yes, some of those things have been brought up and discussed. And like we're here, we don't own it, but there is some provision within that property. But yes, to that. Is there anything else? Okay, if not, on the consent, no items were officially pulled because on item D, it requires a four-fist vote. So as long as we have the unanimous, we don't have to worry about that. But do I have any action on consent?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made and second roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to item six, public hearing.
Item 6A, hold a public hearing, waive first reading and introduce an ordinance to amend San Bruno Municipal Code Title 12, Land Use, Article 3, Zoning, Chapter 12.80, Definitions and Add Chapter 12.270, Short Term Residential Rentals and Adopt the Associated Permit Fee Resolution.
Director Smith?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Darcy Smith. I'm the Community and Economic Development Director. And I'll be providing you with the staff report for this public hearing item. And then Director DiMartini will provide part of the presentation at the end where we cover the implementation program summary and fiscal impacts. So first I'll start with the definition of the objective for this item, cover the background. As there have been two previous city council meetings to review this topic. And I'll cover the proposed ordinance and resolution in detail, which is before you tonight. And then Director DiMartini will cover the implementation program summary on fiscal impacts and I'll end with highlighting the action before council tonight and allow time for questions. And I want to emphasize that while I get the glory of making this presentation, it was not without a huge amount of team effort, including the city attorney, Mark Zaffrona, who can answer any questions tonight on the legal aspects of the ordinance, as well as many members of the Community and Economic Development Department staff, including Pamela Wu, planning the housing manager and Roy Bernal, our chief building official. The objective tonight is to hold the public hearing and ultimately ideally waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance that would amend the municipal code Title 12, which is the zoning code. It would both amend Chapter 12.80, which is definitions and add a brand new chapter, which is Chapter 12.270, all about short term residential rentals. And since there's a new permit type, there's also a proposed permit fee resolution that's before you tonight to go along with the ordinance. So just a brief background on what these are. So just a brief background on what these are. And these didn't exist about 10 years ago, but with the internet and folks looking to share economic resources better, there's been a real growth in the use of these short-term rentals. And it's really important to emphasize what the short term means. It's defined by state law, which is rentals of less than 30 days. So if a tenant has a lease of over 30 days, that's a long-term rental or just a typical rental. So the kind of rental that a normal person enters into when they rent an apartment, or rent a unit, or sign a long-term, you know, tenant lease with a landlord. These are short-term. These are either vacationers, or business travelers, or maybe just someone, you know, visiting their parents for the weekend. So they're called guests, and they rent these rooms from hosts. Those are sort of the common terminology that you'll see in the ordinance. And it's really result of sharing this resource. So people have homes that might be vacant for a period of time, they might have bedrooms that are vacant. And with the internet and these websites that you see here, like Airbnb and HomeAway and BRBO, they're made available to be rented to optimize utilization. And, you know, the hosts like them because they're able to get revenue from them. So basically, if the if there's wasn't profitable, we wouldn't see it. But I want to also emphasize that at a time when housing is scarce, it really allows for the optimization of what could be an unoccupied home, or an underutilized resource, such as bedrooms that are sitting vacant. So I want to emphasize that this is, this does play a role in solving the housing crisis. Even though they're short-term, there's still a valid, sort of, a valid use of it. So we have, we do not have adopted regulations. Obviously, it took about a year to get us here and a lot of work to get here. And we also are looking at a new permit type, which I don't enter into lightly, because it creates more work for city staff. Many cities have adopted land use regulations that are pretty simple, to be honest. And I want to, I want to emphasize, our ordinance is very comprehensive, and it goes into details that reflect a wide amount of research from city staff and lessons learned. And I think if you picked up, if you went online last year, you'll see that Airbnbs are in the news, and we did a lot of research around responding to how we could prepare the best state-of-the-art ordinance possible and alleviate some of the concerns that other cities have had. Not being the first out of the gate to adopt an ordinance isn't necessarily going to result in the best land use policy. And so we really take into heart the research element, talk to their studies, and see what works and doesn't work. And as I mentioned, you know, we don't enter into this lightly, because it requires city staff time and resources, which are scarce, but I will present the most convincing policy arguments as to why we really need these regulations. So as I mentioned, you, the council, have had two study sessions on this, going back two years ago. You had your last study session in January, and we presented the ordinance in largely the format that is before you tonight. There were only very minor comments, which we responded to. And I want to highlight that when it went to the planning commission in May, they had no changes at all. And I think that's the recognition of the sheer amount of staff work that went into this. They had some questions and comments, but no changes at all. And, you know, we're here tonight to hold this public hearing and ideally introduce the ordinance and adopt that associated resolution. So two years ago, you were briefed by the city attorney on this topic, and you asked a lot of questions that then staff went back and researched. And part of that research included an attachment to your staff report, which is a comparative matrix of other cities. We researched those other cities. We examined some of the topics of concern at that point, such as parking concerns. We examined your concern around tax collection, which was addressed in a municipal code update that you have already adopted. And it also looked at, you know, whether we would restrict these to certain neighborhoods and establish a maximum number, the latter two. Most cities don't do that. Really, at this point, have a, you know, a handful of them in the city. But even pre-COVID, we had about 200, and those ranged from maybe just a room in someone's house to a whole house. But we don't have a lot of them, so we didn't recommend a maximum number. Sort of thing where the market just regulates itself. So in January, when we took the ordinance before you, which again was largely in the format you see tonight, there were three main changes that you provided feedback on, and we made those changes. Originally, we had proposed 90 days for the annual cap on accessory dwelling unit short-term rentals. And there was a comment, well, why don't you raise that to 120? And on the flip side, there was a comment to reduce the annual limit for non-hosted whole-house rentals to 120. So just choose the same number. Make it 120 for ADUs and make it 120 for whole-house rentals. And I think we agreed that seems logical, especially since this is a brand-new ordinance, we can always come back and adjust that if we see it not equalizing with demand. And you also gave us feedback to amend the definitions in the zoning code, which are just really minor items, but to clean that up. As I mentioned, the planning commission just reviewed this in May, and they had no comments that resulted in any changes to the ordinance. They had a few questions and provided some feedback. And they were sort of concerned about the cost being too high, so we looked at the cost of staff time, and I'll provide some information about that later. And they supported the bi-annual permit renewal requirements every two years, which kind of reduces the burden on city staff and then the cost to the property owners or hosts. But it's really important to emphasize the planning commission didn't make the changes, and then adopted the recommend resolution unanimously, 600, recommending approval. So again, we don't have any city zoning regulations. That doesn't mean they don't exist in the city or they're prohibited. Just some key items in our current zoning code are that, well, we don't allow hotels in residential zoning districts. We do allow rentals up to individuals. So for example, in an R1 zoning, if you have a house, you can rent it up to two individuals. And a whole house can basically be rented for any duration of time. A whole house could be rented long-term, it can be rented short-term. That's just allowed already. So how do we tax these? Well, we do have taxation in place, but without a mechanism to collect the tax and sort of permits to track where these are in the city and who's operating them, it's very difficult to collect that tax. And so we don't have that, any program in place. And as you'll hear later tonight, we have a transit occupancy tax. It's 12%. And because these operate as sort of transient occupancy uses, again, that update of Chapter 3 of the municipal code clearly states that the city can tax these uses, as well as the fact that our business license tax allows us to collect the business license taxes, because they are a business. People profit off of these, and we have the ability to require that. But it's just been very difficult for city staff to track and to know who are running them, because they don't come down to city hall wanting to pay their taxes, big surprise. But with this permit, it's really the key to know where they exist, who's operating them, how many days a year they're renting them, et cetera. So as I mentioned, these are in the city now, and this is where I want to give you some of the most compelling public policy reason to enact this ordinance tonight. If there's one main takeaway, it's the fact that these exist, and in some cases, they're being run without the benefits of permits, specifically building permits, which are run out of the community development department, which are a source of complaints. So we actually have received complaints, unfortunately, by guests who've stayed in these, and they called the city and said, you know what, I didn't feel safe. I was really nervous sleeping there. And the last thing I think we want is for someone, a guest of our city, to go to bed and not feel safe. And what has happened in cases where the fire marshal and the chief building official or inspectors went out is that they found construction where someone took part of their home, put up plywood, partitioned off part of the home, and rented it out. And even worse, people converted garages to units. And in one case, there were multiple beds, and they were being rented out. It was very unsafe. You know, sleeping in a garage is is not acceptable, and that's what folks do to make some extra money, and it's unfortunate. And I think the cornerstone of this ordinance is a permit that's reviewed by, issued by the city, but most importantly, an inspection done by a building inspector and the fire marshal, and adherence to just some basic requirements, which I'll go over later. But again, we've gone out to these sites, and they they would upset you greatly, because you'll see that folks are skirting the laws and operating these and creating a health and safety issue. But there's been no data through the police department who researched this, that there's increased criminal activity or major property nuisances. I mean, these are homes that, you know, you might live down the street from one, and as long as the guests there, you know, treat them like home, they generally don't have major, major nuisances associated with them. And the ordinance and the permit will allow, though, for us, though, if those do exist, to be able to call an owner, for example, if there's a noise complaint, or worst-case, revoke the permit. So what the, what this allows us to do is if someone's not following the code requirements or a noise ordinance, or being a good neighbor, we can pull their short-term rental permit. So as I mentioned, we started this task, they're researching other cities, and as I said, just to ensure the first one out of the gate doesn't mean you have a award-winning ordinance. We called those cities and talked to them about what worked, what didn't work. And I think I'll be, I'll be proud to say, I think we have the most robust ordinance of any city, and we look at it from sort of lessons learned from other cities. Most cities do allow both these hosted and non-hosted stays. They all require generally the business license and the taxes. But they do differ on different regulatory land use policies. The maximum duration of stay is one that's ranged in different locations. But our ordinance, as I said, the cornerstone is a permit process. And for now, we've recommended a fee of $50 for the initial application, and then $250 for the permit renewal. That's every two years. So this is just an estimate based on me sort of talking with different staff members of how much time would be involved, but driven, it's a brand-new permit type, we may need to come back to you and adjust that. Our goal was to set it kind of at the median. Some might require more work, some a little less. But we do want to capture the staff time associated with this, and that's largely toward inspection. This ordinance would establish really the land use regulation. So where are these permitted, what are the annual limits? And for now, we are allowing them in any legal unit that exists in any zoning district. As I said, there, you know, there's not a huge number of these, so we think we can process the permits. And what's in the ordinance is really these operational standards, clear requirements for owners, and clearly define and establish tax and license requirements that the city, again, would track and enforce thoroughly. So this slide shows you those three different types of units. And again, these are existing homes. This isn't about creating, sort of, building new homes. This is taking a home that exists down the street or an accessory dwelling unit in someone's rear yard and allowing them to be rented for short-term. So here are the annual limits. And again, based on the feedback we got from you in January, we equalized the annual limits for the different types. But we've made no other major changes to the ordinance. And again, I want to emphasize that this just allows for optimization during vacant vacant periods, especially the bedrooms. I mean, there's a lot of folks in town who might have one or two empty bedrooms for various reasons, maybe not right now, but when kids go back to college, they might have an empty bedroom. And sometimes they like to rent them out. They like, you know, Home For All runs a very popular home-sharing program that's more longer-term. But having worked with that organization, there's a lot of folks who enjoy, you know, living with a roommate and sharing the costs, and that's what this can do even on a short-term basis. But why would we have annual limits? What's the the policy there? It's just to ensure that we don't lose long-term rentals. So these can be, in some areas, like, you know, vacation destinations, these can be very pricey units, like $500 a night. We don't want someone to pull a long-term rental completely offline. What we're trying to do is optimize kind of vacancy periods and keep long-term rentals in the system so that our, we can house our employees who have that demand. So I'll just quickly go through the guiding policy elements. I've touched on some of them. Why is the permit important? Well, it really ensures that we're tracking these, that we require adherence to our building and safety requirements, which are really simple. We require a smoke detector, that's about $10, a carbon monoxide detector, maybe a little bit more, and a heating system. So those are just the basic sort of requirements of someone sleeping here. The other thing is an insurance policy, which the city attorney has assured me is very important to get, but this allows to mandate and verify those. And, you know, we'll really ensure that we can track the taxes and collect them. So the operational standards. Again, if you read the news, you know that why these are important. And we've also heard from our community that it's really important that this doesn't create a burden on the existing community. So the ordinance has a lot of operational standards. I won't go through all of them, but I'll tell you, the main one is that if, that this is a home that has a garage or parking space and a driveway, that has to be made available for the guests. And they have to comply with our noise ordinance. The unit has to have posted emergency and safety information. So for example, if we need to shut off the gas, and we we issue an alert that gas needs to be shut off for various reasons, the renter can find that information kind of posted to the inside of the door and know where the gas shut-off valve is. I mean, that that information isn't always tracked well, and so this ensures that safety and emergency information is available. And as I said, that we would require local contact information, so that if someone is having a party or something, and the neighbors call the police, our police department has that contact information, get in touch with the owner and hold them accountable. I'm sure, again, you've read the stories about how these these can create noise or nuisance. And we've had no reports of that to date, but could it happen? Absolutely. So the permit fee, I mentioned previously, we're just trying to get cost recovery, and these are our best estimates at this point in time, but since it's a brand-new permit type, it's an estimate. But we would come back, we would track the time utilized on these permits and come back if we need to. And again, we're not making money. We're just trying to cover the fees, so the time involved. So what kind of time is involved? Well, as I mentioned, this comes in to the Community and Economic Development Department, and we process the paperwork, and we check those insurance requirements. And we also check that they're adhering to our regulations, which, as I mentioned, are pretty robust. Then the building inspector and fire marshal would go do a visit, and again, they would just focus on basic building and safety requirements, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, heater. So they got to go out, and they got to inspect it and log it. And then ultimately, I, as the director, would sign the permit, and then we'd issue the permit. And then again, it's good for two years, but I want to emphasize, if we get complaints, if we find that they're out of compliance with their ordinance, there are provisions for revocation. And also, you know, just robust provisions around that. So now I get to hand the presentation over to Director DiMartini, who's going to summarize the implementation program, options, and fiscal impacts.
Thank you so much, Darcy. I appreciate that. Good evening, honorable members of the city council. This is Keith DiMartini, your finance director. So I'm just going to walk through some options that the city staff will be considering when implementing the program. Some options that city staff will consider when implementing the program, as well as going through a fiscal impact analysis that was conducted. So first, there are three options that city staff will, that will be considering when it comes time for us to enter into the program, and they'll listen here on this slide. First, the city will consider whether or not to enter into a voluntary collection agreement or a VTA with a hosting platform, or potentially multiple hosting platforms, such as Airbnb. And this agreement would authorize the hosting platform, such as Airbnb, to collect and also remit the TOT that's required to the cities from those operators that are listing their STR on the platform. So that agreement allows for a more streamlined, more, much quicker collection and remittance of TOT tax revenues to the city. Many cities have entered into a VTA with Airbnb for the, for the administration of TOT through an STR program. Staff will also consider entering into a contract with a consulting firm that will assist with the identification and also the outreach that is required to bring these short-term rental units and houses into compliance with the new regulatory ordinance that Director Smith just described, sort of facilitating the submittal of the STR zoning permit and the application process, and then assisting them through that process. Staff will also consider entering into a contract, potentially to assist with the collection of the business license tax and also the TOT revenue from the STR operators as well. Just by way of comparison, currently, there are 12 hotels in the city of San Bruno, and estimates that we received that there are over 200 short-term rentals in the city of San Bruno, potentially, that was pre-COVID. And so just the sheer volume of TOT monthly remittances is a much larger workload. And so just the sheer volume of TOT monthly remittances is a much larger workload to review and confirm. So we may require some outside assistance. So moving on to the fiscal impact analysis, staff built a model to project what the annual gross revenue would be from implementation of a program like this, as well as what the estimated cost would be for implementation, to really determine what the net revenue would be to the city. So first, starting on the gross revenue, when developing assumptions and calculating what we think the annual permit fee revenue would be, as well as the business license tax and the transient occupancy tax revenue. This was a pre-COVID projection that was conducted. It was a little over $250,000. And then as far as staff estimated time and also some additional consulting costs that might be required, as I mentioned earlier, staff are projecting a little over $119,000 annually just to implement this program. And so the net result of $253,000 minus $119,000 would be approximately $133,000 of net additional annual revenue into the city's general fund from the implementation of this program. Again, there are multiple assumptions built into this model, and this will be something that staff would monitor over time to really understand what the true fiscal impact of this program will be. And I will say again that these projections were done pre-COVID. And so now that we're in this time, we're four months into COVID, and we all know that the hotel industry has suffered substantially from the shelter-in-place orders, the STR volumes and occupancy will follow a similar pattern, most likely, to the hotel occupancy. So we will have to sort of wait and see what the true impact is. Again, for the current fiscal year, if the council decides to look forward to see with this program, the city expects, would expect to receive very little TOT revenue and business license tax revenue, again, in the current year from this program. And I mentioned earlier that the STR occupancy will likely follow the hotel occupancy, again, resulting in very little revenue in the current fiscal year. And so with that, I think I'll turn it back over to Director Smith to close out tonight.
Yes, so tonight's action for you, should you wish to proceed, is to, well, we are holding the public hearing already, but to waive the first reading, introduce the ordinance to amend San Bruno municipal code Title 12 and adopt the associated permit key resolution. Should you do that, then the second reading and adoption would be scheduled at the next regular meeting, and it would be effective 30 days after adoption, so potentially late September. And the fee resolution goes into effect 60 days later. So again, late September, but my department would then spin up a website and permit application form to be developed. And in closing, I just want to estimate that you just heard about pre-COVID, but I'll say that I think right now is a great time to implement this new program because we've seen a dip in the number of available short-term rentals. But that allows us to go find these and do the work to get the permits reviewed and issued and inspections done before the business picks up again. So it could be next year, but it allows a great, it's great timing because it allows us to do that work, to find these and go through the permitting process before business ramps up again. So I just want to emphasize, this is one of those things where the timing's actually quite ideal because there's a huge education component to go out to the owners that were running these, and there's an inspection process where, you know, we might go out and find things, as I've mentioned in the past, that require modifications or to bring these into compliance. So it could take some iterations to bring these into full compliance with our new ordinance, which are all, again, based on obtaining optimal public health, safety, and welfare for our residents and guests. But I want to emphasize that the timing is really optimal for this piece of legislation. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have tonight, as well as Director DiMartini and the city manager and the city attorney, who all worked collaboratively on this for honestly over a year. So it's nice to get to the finish line, hopefully.
Thank you to everybody for their work and thank you for their reports. What I'm going to do is ask anybody from the audience who's watching, who wishes to speak, if you go ahead and put up your hand, we'll allow a moment for that to occur. And then what I'd like to do is really quickly go to council, see if they have any questions on the presentation. We'll give a couple of minutes, and then we'll see if there's anybody from the public. Council?
No questions for me.
Okay. I'm not seeing any, and I'm going to double-check to the city clerk, but I'm not seeing any hands up from our, from the audience.
That is correct.
Okay. So with that said, can I have action on closing the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Motion made by Salazar, seconded by Davis. On this, I can just, my understanding is on this, I can just go ahead and take a voice. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Got it. I see, I hear nobody opposed, so we'll do 5-0 voice on closing public hearing. And we'll bring it back to council for questions to staff.
Through the mayor?
Yes, council member Mason.
I just, I wanted to thank Director Smith because I had asked about the, you know, kind of bad behavior or bad behaving owners. So I do see that there was a permanent revocation enforcement and appeal process put in. So I just, I'm just curious to know, after a year, so if it's an issue of like a permitting, after a year, does the city have the discretion to continue that revocation passed one year? Specifically, I'm looking at page seven of nine, if you have the physical book in front And that's my only question.
Thank you. Would staff member would like to handle that question, please?
Sorry, we were on mute. Darcy Smith, the community economic development director, will address.
So should there be a revocation for non-compliance with provisions of the ordinance? There is a provision that states that no application for a short-term residential rental zoning permit will be accepted within one year of revocation. So if it's over a year, yes, they could reapply. Certainly, we would scrutinize their application, and especially given that it was revoked. But, you know, it's possible, for example, there's a new owner, it's possible it was just one problem tenant that got out of hand. But they have to demonstrate to us that they will comply with the ordinance before the permit can be issued.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Davis.
Thank you. So that's good to know that actually there is a process, so after one year, they could come back and reapply. So I guess, what's the process then if, you know, you're going to get complaints? I mean, I hear residents all the time, "God, do you know that house on the corner over there is Airbnb?" So once we find out that that exists in the city, then staff goes out, does an inspection, finds out that it is, do they have a certain time to comply with all the regulations? I mean, I would say there's a lot of tedious follow-up in making sure people comply. Again, and my concern is that there's ordinances in the, we have processes that things don't get followed. And so when someone is violated, is there like a fine? I mean, how do we cover our costs on all this tedious follow-up?
Well, so if there was a violation, it just depends on what the nature of the violation is. So if, for example, it's a party and they're having a violation of our noise ordinance, you know, we would pursue that. That might be a limited instance, and we would obviously educate the owner about compliance with our noise ordinance. If it's a more egregious or serious violation, I mean, especially related to any type of construction done without the benefit of permits, or I would say one of the potentials is that someone says they have a hosted unit, where the host is present and we show up and there's no owner, that would be a bigger sort of thing where they misrepresented their permit application. Because as you've heard, there's a big difference in terms of how we regulate them if there's a host present and the host is an owner, like, you're there, you're keeping supervision, versus a non-hosted unit where the owners are, you know, in Tahiti or somewhere fun. But what this means is that if they have misrepresented their type of unit, they're into a more egregious sort of issue. And, you know, as council member Mason pointed out, we have the ability to revoke their permit. And then they can't reapply for a year. And I'll be honest, they could be out a lot of income. I mean, these are income-producing businesses. So there's an inherent interest in the property owner, both to follow the law, but sometimes the maximization of profits means you're not always following the law also.
Right.
But that's why we need a permit process. And this is brand-new, so we'll see what happens. But as you know, the code enforcement division is being transferred to police, the police department, and they will ramp up their tracking and their enforcement of these things, and they would fall into that category of code enforcement. But I want to emphasize that if there's a serious issue, police would respond. If it's a late-night issue with a big party, that would follow a different approach.
I appreciate those comments, and I'm definitely more concerned about the egregious ones versus the minor issues. But I think it's always important when a new process gets developed that there really is a full process on how a code enforcement issue gets resolved. I mean, I hadn't even really thought about, you know, not having something as simple as a smoke detector, and that is something that's really important and can save lives. So those are some great things and some easy fixes, but it's really more of the serious hazards where people are putting up walls and, you know, taking down walls that maybe are not, or should not be legally be taken down, and they're not structurally safe and things like that. So I just want to make sure there's a good process and a good follow-up, and not just that we go out there one time to investigate, but that there is a plan, check, do, whatever it might be that needs to happen to make sure it gets followed up on.
Yes. Council member, in regard to one of the first parts of your question, for a new short-term rental, we are looking into companies that, for a small fee, will scan all of the various platforms and provide the city with a list of all of the active short-term rentals available in the city. And we will then cross-reference that with people that have a permit. And so that will let us know exactly what short-term rentals are being advertised on platforms, but the owner has not come in and established themselves through the business tax and the regulatory process. And so we'll be able to be notified of those, and the company will also send out a few letters before then turning it back over to the staff to follow up and go out and do some enforcement on that.
That's perfect. That's great. Thank you.
Hi, Smear Salazar.
Thank you. So I found the slide on the illegal activity interesting, and I'm wondering how effective we think implementing a program like this will really be at identifying some of those units that are really, you know, really serious code violations, like, you know, if somebody's got, you know, their garage partitioned and a bunch of beds in there. I imagine they're probably not going through normal channels to get people in there. They're probably not, you know, your five-star bed and breakfast kind of thing. So I'm just wondering, is there still going to be, or could there potentially still be a lot of units that are out there sort of under the radar that aren't going to be picked up by this, that are still big issues? And how do we deal with those? And it sounded like there's going to be some cost that's been identified, built into this for, you know, doing the compliance checks. But if we get into some serious abatement issues that show up because of this, where we're now having people required to tear down portions of, you know, illegal modifications, and we have to go through the legal process, I imagine that could get pretty expensive. So I'm wondering if we factored any of that in.
So council member, we'll address that in a couple of ways. One is the scanning of the online platforms to be notified of units that are being advertised. And with every new permit, there's an inspection, and every two years, there's a reinspection. And so if illegal work is done, we should catch that on the reinspection. With regard to unpermitted work or additional costs for code enforcement activities, that would undertake our normal process. When we have someone that is found to be in violation, there is a fine and a fee schedule that is intended to recover the city's costs for those compliance efforts. And so that would sort of almost be a normal case.
Okay. And one other thing, just regarding the timing, so I agree that probably having a lull in this type of activity does create an opportunity for staff to sort of get ahead of it and start documenting it. But at the same time, if it's something that we're going to farm out, I'm not exactly sure how that, how that cost structure would work out. I think I heard the city manager say that it's a small fee for scanning platforms, but if we're paying somebody to do that work and there's nothing out there, we may be incurring a cost and not generating any revenue from it. So I'm wondering, is the plan, at least initially, to have staff do a lot of this work? Or do we engage? And I know that those are, those are decision points to be made, but I'm just wondering where we're leaning, especially during this, you know, while we're still in, you know, COVID times, and we know that, you know, activity is going to be low. Are we leaning one way or the other?
Sure, council member, we're leaning toward employing the services of a company. There are companies out there that have built software that automatically scan all of the various platforms, Airbnb, BBRO, and there are over 50 short-term rental platforms out there. But I'll turn it over to the finance director that will talk a little bit more about the cost structure. Yeah, thank you. So council member Salazar, we have been in contact and working with a couple consultants that have provided some information to city staff currently about the services that they provide and what their rates are. One quote that we got, charged, provided a flat, very nominal fee per STR for the compliance work. So once, once the STR has been identified, the work that it takes to get the STR operator to complete the permit application, review the permit application, submit it to the city for review and approval, the actual issuing of the permit itself, the consultant could potentially do that themselves as well, and then follow-up communication, customer service, functions like that, that's a very small nominal fee per STR. And there's also a flat annual fee that has been quoted to us in regards to the scanning and the identification of the STR population. And so that would be more of a fixed cost, regardless of the number of STRs that there are in, within the city of San Bruno. And so those, those cost assumptions have been built into the financial forecast that I presented to you earlier this evening. But you're right, if there are fewer STRs that are in operation, that fixed amount seems, would seem higher per STR. But again, this program is assuming that the STR population will eventually grow over time back to the current population that we think there is currently in the city of San Bruno, which is over 200.
Okay. All right, thank you. It was a very good report, so thank you for all the work you put into that.
Council member Medina.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, staff. This is a lot of work. It again shows, I am in support of this. It shows this council's willingness to look at other revenue streams. So that's great. Two questions, first one being, so there is typically a double fee permit when you do unpermitted construction in San Bruno, and the time that a code enforcement officer spends and staff time to work on the case, that's all recovered. In this case where there is a STR operating and it does get found, what would be the penalty for that operation without a permit?
So, council member, let's take this in two separate phases, because there will be one phase where there will not be a penalty. So right now, we have STR operating. When we roll out complete registration process, there will be a window. When we roll out complete registration process, there will be a window, potentially upwards of 60 days, that active STRs have to become registered. And if you register within that window, there will not be a back payment. That is typically how these are set up. After, after that window, if you're found to be operating, you are liable for all of the taxes, even if you did not collect them from your host. And that is when the services of companies that scan the various platform websites can provide the city with information on what rentals you, you advertise and potentially what rentals you had. And we will go through our normal process to require documentation under penalty of perjury for you to pay the taxes that are, that are due to the city.
Okay. Thank you for that. My second question, suggestion would be, I heard that staff would be working on a website during Garcia's comments. And so would it be possible to have a map of all of the STRs so the public would be aware of where they're at, and it would actually be good advertising for people to go, hey, go to the city's website, that's where all of the legal ones, uh, uh, STRs are?
Yeah. Councilmember, while that is sort of technically possible, my concern is that we would be sort of creating a level of work because STRs coming though, you know, you know, potentially every day someone's listening into STR or getting registered or, or taking it off. Actually, the best way right now to find a website of where all the STRs are, are, are to go to VBRo and Airbnb are, who are the two largest platforms tied to San Bruno, and they pop right up. And so I think that would be the, the most efficient way to do that. And I don't know that we typically list other permit holders on our website and what the issues would be regarding that, but we can certainly look into that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, if there are no further questions, I don't see any hands up. Again, I want to thank staff. As has been indicated, we're looking at all options. I know I've heard from one person as well as thinking that, which is not bad to be conservative in the revenue with COVID, we can certainly understand that maybe if we were, prior to COVID, that that would even be a higher potential revenue source for the city. So do appreciate the time and the report. Is there any action from council? We want to move forward, we would need to, a motion, a second to waive the first reading.
You waived the first reading.
A second.
That was a popular one. Okay, let's do what the, we'll go with the Vice Mayor for the motion and Councilmember Mason for the second, sorry, Marty. And then roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye. Okay, Marty. Uh, would, does somebody like to make a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'd like to introduce the ordinance.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
The motion made by Medina, Marty, seconded by Davis. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye. All right, thank you, everyone. Let's move on to conduct of business, please.
Item 7A, adopt a resolution submitting to the voters at the November 3, 2020 election, a city of San Bruno recovery and reinvestment measure, increasing the transient occupancy tax, hotel bed tax.
Director Di Martini.
Okay, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Pete Di Martini, your finance director here again. I'll be delivering the presentation this evening on the city's local recovery and reinvestment effort, which includes the potential measure of increasing the transient occupancy, or more better known as the hotel bed tax. This was discussed at the last city council meeting two weeks ago in a study session, and staff has taken the feedback from the city council and incorporated that into the staff report that is going to be this evening and ready to move forward. So the objective for this presentation this evening is to adopt a resolution submitting to the voters at the November 3, 2020 election, a city of San Bruno recovery and reinvestment measure, increasing the transient occupancy tax. The agenda for this evening is to review the ballot question, which was thoroughly reviewed with the city council in the prior city council meeting, and then make our formal request with the city council to place this, this revenue measure on the ballot, and then discuss next steps and take any questions that you might have. So first, the ballot question. So here is the ballot question that is before you this, this evening, and I'm going to go ahead and read it and then just summarize the minor changes that were made to it. The ballot question is as follows. Maintain fund city services facilities such as addressing traffic congestion parking, maintaining neighborhood safety, 911 emergency medical response times, disaster health crisis response services, park city facilities and general services. Shall an ordinance updating the city of San Bruno's existing transient occupancy tax, a bed tax paid only by hotel lodging guests from 12% to 14% until ended by voters, providing approximately an additional $370,000 annually for San Bruno. With independent audits, all funds controlled locally be adopted. So from the, the presentation that we delivered at the last city council meeting, there were only minor changes that were made based on the direction from the council. We, we removed the word annual, we, we removed the word oversight from the second to last line as, as, as staff presented to you and as agreed to by the city council, that now only, that line really has been updated to only say with independent audits. We have also just standardized some of the language and ensured consistency with the cannabis tax measure that will, will be, will be presented at the next item on, on your agenda. And really, those were the only changes to the question itself. There was a change made to the ordinance at, at the request of, of the city council that I'll describe on this slide. The resolution, first, it features, as I said earlier, removing the word oversight from the ballot question. It also allows the state to, to submit to the voters the TOT rate increase on the November 2020 election. And it also authorizes a process permitting a community seminal of an argument, if the community, if a community member would choose to do so, and also the city attorney's impartial analysis. On the ordinance, however, we did include language on it, as described in the last city council meeting, that provides the city council with the authority to reduce the rate below 14% if the city council would choose to do so. That authority is only a change in the ordinance itself, and it was not any change that was required on the ballot question. The ordinance also authorizes the increase from 12% up to 14%. It confirms that any additional revenue from this revenue measure, from this revenue measure, that all of the proceeds are for general city purposes, and it makes the effective date of the rate increase March 1 of 2021. So with that, staff would like to request the city council to adopt the resolution submitting to the voters at the November 3, 2020 election, the city of San Bruno recovery and reinvestment measure, increasing the transient occupancy tax. And again, just to summarize the election cycle timeline that I presented to you two weeks ago, staff held a business roundtable with many of the hotel operators in San Bruno to discuss the revenue measure project and obtain much of their feedback, which we presented to you at the last meeting. We held a, a study session at the prior city council meeting on July 14th, obtained your feedback, your feedback, and then incorporated that into the ordinance resolution that are before you this evening. Tonight, staff is requesting your action in order to place that item on the November 2020 ballot. The city will then transmit all the required documents to the county by August 8. A series of community outreach and education efforts will then be underway on August, on August through October. The auction day is scheduled for November 3, and then if the voters approve of the revenue measure increase, the new rate will take effect on March 1 of 2021. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Di Martini. And again, if there's any members of the public that wish to speak, if you could raise your hand, and I'll bring it to the colleagues. Just as a note, this item, as well as the, the next one, does require council to have a four-fifth vote in favor in order for it to proceed. Councilmember Medina, you have your hand?
No.
No worries. No, no, no problem. Any questions from my colleagues?
No questions.
No, no, no. Okay. I'm seeing no members raising hands from the public, and of course, city clerk will always stop me if I've overlooked, but I'm not seeing any. And with that, then, this is for an action item, and it would need a resolution by four-fifth vote of the council. Is there any action?
For the chair?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to introduce the resolution.
Second.
Motion made, Salazar, seconded, Davis. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, next item B, please.
Item 7B, adopt a resolution submitting a cannabis business tax measure to the voters at the November 3, 2020 election.
City Attorney Zaffarano.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we are looking for a presentation, which we were sure it was loaded onto the presentations site, so if you just give us a, a second, we'll, we'll find that.
Okay.
City Attorney Zaffarano, I will have IT come in because we tested it this afternoon, so it's somewhere, let me see.
We're here to talk about the commercial cannabis ballot measure, and our agenda is we're going to review the background very briefly of this measure, review the prior city council direction, discuss the features of the tax measure itself, and discuss the next steps. So here's a little bit of background. You have seen these slides before, but I thought it was important to include them just for context. So as we know, under federal law, cannabis is still a controlled substance that is illegal to possess or sell. But state law, Proposition 64 adopted in 2016, does allow a wide variety of use in the state, including possession, purchase, sale, and distribution of certain amounts. And it also allows indoor cultivation of six plants for personal use, and allows most commercial activities subject to obtaining a state license. It also does allow cities to regulate or prohibit some or all cannabis activities. The state also importantly does impose excise and sales taxes on cannabis totaling about 22%. Of that, the city would receive about 1.5% in total sales tax, including the measure G tax. So San Bruno does not currently allow cannabis. We have a couple of ordinances that address that. One adopted in 2011 regarding medical cannabis distribution, and another adopted in 2018 regarding commercial cannabis activities that are prohibited except as allowed by state law, which is the personal cultivation aspect. However, the city council does retain the authority to either repeal those ordinances or to modify them in any way that it sees fit. Let's take a brief look at what the city council directed us to do. In April of 2020, the city council requested a study session, and we did have a study session, two of them in fact on June 2 and 4, where the city council had a robust discussion regarding various aspects of both regulatory and tax measures. On June 9, the city council directed staff to work on placing cannabis tax measure on the November 2020 ballot, and that's what we've been doing since that time. There was also direction at that meeting to not place a regulatory measure on the ballot, thus leaving it to the city council's future discretion regarding whether to allow such businesses. City council also authorized certain expenditures not to exceed $30,000 for various consultant services, mailers, and election costs. And then on June 29, just, just last month, the city council gave staff direction to approve the wording of the proposed ballot measure. So let's take a look and see what that, that language says. And like the finance director, I'm going to go ahead and read this. Although no cannabis marijuana businesses are currently allowed in the city, shall an ordinance be adopted imposing an additional business license tax of up to 10% of gross receipts on cannabis businesses until ended by voters, with annual audits in all funds for San Bruno. This tax will generate no revenue initially, but would generate revenue if in the future cannabis businesses are permitted or exist in the city. So that's the measure, it's unchanged from the last time the city council signed on the 29th of June. This measure is similar to other successful measures in neighboring cities, and importantly, it does authorize specifically the city council to reduce or modify the tax in the future so long as the tax does not exceed the 10% that's authorized by voters. It also preserves the city council's discretion to permit these businesses in the future and thus potentially correct, collect revenue from the tax. So here are the actions required if the city council does want to put this on the ballot in November 2020. You need four affirmative votes required to place it on the ballot. The meeting that we're at right now is to adopt the resolution that would place it on the ballot, and in order to pass the measure would require a majority voter approval. So the next step, and the only step at this meeting, would be to adopt a resolution to place the measure on the November 2020 ballot. Ballot measure and associated materials are sent to San Mateo County by August 8, the same as for the TOT measure that the finance director discussed. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you for the report, and also if there's any members of the community that would like to speak, if you could put up your virtual hand, we'll give that a moment and see if there's any questions from my colleagues.
No questions.
Not seen any, and I'm not seeing any hands from the audience. So this is an action item. There is a resolution, it does require a four-fifth affirmative vote. Is there any action?
A motion to place this resolution submitting a cannabis business tax measure to the voters at the November 3, 2020 election on the ballot.
Second.
Motion made by Mason, seconded by Marty Medina. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item C, please.
Item 7C, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to waive penalties and interest related to transient occupancy tax, TOT remittances from San Bruno hotels related to COVID-19.
Director Di Martini.
Okay, good evening again, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Pete Di Martini, your finance director. I'm here to present a presentation and staff report that's before you this evening to authorize the city manager to waive TOT, which is transient occupancy tax, penalties and interest related to COVID-19. So in your packet is a resolution, and if approved, would authorize the city manager to waive the penalties and interest related to transient occupancy tax from San Bruno hotels that are directly related to COVID-19. The agenda for this evening is to provide a brief overview of the impact that COVID-19 has had on the hotel industry, discuss what are the TOT requirements in the municipal code, provide, request, that, the request before you would be to provide the authority to the city manager during this, this current declaration of emergency. the city manager during this current declaration of emergency, and then finally make the request to the council, and then take any questions that you might have. So first, let's briefly discuss what COVID-19, the impact that it has had on the hotel industry. Since March of 2020, when the initial shelter in place order took effect, staff has received direct feedback from San Bruno Hotels on what impact that they have felt. First and foremost, there was a very sudden significant decline in hotel occupancy. Some hotels indicated to city staff that they were temporarily closed during this time. Many of them had to reduce their workforce because of the reduced occupancy rates. Some of them indicated to us that they had to acquire financing just to stay in operation to maintain, to adhere to their cash flow needs, and then many of them had reduced room rates as well because of the reduced occupancy. Many of these factors had resulted in some delay of remittance of TOT to the city of San Bruno. And this graph here on the right just shows a really quick graph of what the hotel occupancy rates have been in the state of California from March 9th through May 20th, and you can see a very, very steep significant drop in mid-March, and there's been a little bit of slight uptick through the weeks after that, but again, is very, very low compared to what the historical averages have been. This slide just summarizes what the TOT requirements are in the city's municipal code as it relates to the remittance of the TOT from the hotel. So just as a reminder, anybody that stays in a hotel not only pays the nightly room rate, but they also pay the current 12% TOT tax to the hotel operator, and then on a monthly basis, that hotel operator is to remit the TOT that was collected from all the folks that stay at the hotel to the city. When the hotel operator fails to remit the TOT as prescribed in the municipal code and the timeline, they are assessed a 10% penalty on that tax. And those penalties continue to accrue when the delinquencies continue, and an additional 1% of interest per month is also assessed on the continued delinquency. All this is outlined in the city's municipal code. Staff received some direct feedback from the hotel operators during the business roundtable that was held a couple of weeks ago that we mentioned to you in the prior presentation about the TOT revenue measure. Staff heard from those hotel operators that the penalties and interest would impose an undue hardship on those hotels, and so at this time, staff is bringing forth TO resolution that would provide the city manager with the authority to waive those penalties and interests related to the delinquent TOT remittances to the city that are directly related to COVID-19. The effective date of when the city manager would be authorized to waive penalties and interest would be the date of the declaration of emergency, which would be March 16th of 2020, and it would provide the city attorney, I'm sorry, the city manager with that authority until the termination of the emergency, which at this point, we do not know what that date would be. In order for a hotel to receive a waiver of penalties and interest, it would require that a full TOT remittance be collected, or an approved payment plan would be executed for ensuring that the full amount would be paid over time. So with that, before you tonight is a resolution that if approved would authorize the city manager to waive penalties and interest related to transient occupancy tax remittances from San Bruno Hotels related to COVID-19. And that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DiMartini. If there's any members of the public that wish to speak, if you could go ahead and identify with the virtual hand, and if there are any questions from my colleagues or comments. Okay, I'm seeing, Councilmember Medina, and then Councilmember Mason.
I'm in support of this. I appreciate this being brought forward to help out our hotels, so I'm speaking in support of it. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, so that it's not a waiving of the TOT tax itself, it's just the penalties and interest. Is that right? I see Director DiMartini nodding.
Yes, Councilmember Mason, that is correct. This does not authorize any waiving of the TOT whatsoever. It is just the waiving of penalties and interest associated with the delinquent TOT remittance.
Okay, great. And then, and how many, I guess, how, how many hotels are behind right now of the group that you just mentioned? I think you said there were about 12?
Councilmember Mason, as of right now, there is one hotel that is behind on remitting their TOT to the city.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I agree with everyone that we do need to help out businesses as much as possible. I attended a webinar a couple of weeks back, and one of the things they were talking about was, you know, what we can do as a municipality is remove barriers and change policies that stand in the way of recovery. The one issue I have with this is that the tax is being paid by the consumer, so the businesses are collecting this tax on behalf of the city from the consumer, and so I'm not understanding why they would not be able to remit that once it's been collected. Are they basically just going to hang on to that then and use it as float to subsidize their other deficiencies?
Councilmember Salazar, great question. So for the one hotel that has already fallen behind, we will approach them with an agreement on waiver of a portion or all of the penalties and interest come to an arrangement where they either pay in full or make a payment plan. But your question is very important, because in no way should this be considered as a leniency that will allow hotel owners to hold on to the public's tax dollars until such time as they're ready to remit them and to use those for operating costs. And so it is providing the city manager with the ability to waive penalties and interest, but that is not required. And so going forward, any hotel that falls behind, they will immediately be contacted and offered a partial or whole waiver of penalties and interest if they establish a payment plan or immediately become current. But if they do not do that, I do not intend to continue to waive those penalties and interest, because like you said, these are taxes that they collect from their guests and that are due to the city, just like sales tax, and those funds are not to be used for operating cost. And so we will in no way allow hotel owners to hang on to the tax money and use that for their own operating cost.
All right, thank you. And it brought to mind a long time ago, when I first got on the council, we did something similar for one of our long-term parking businesses, and I don't think we made any of that money back, and I don't think that business is around anymore, and so I just want to make sure that we're approaching it carefully, that we fully understand the implications, and that it's all been taken into consideration. So thank you for following up on that.
Yeah, I think that was one of my, oh, I'm sorry. I'll just finish up mine real quick, and then I'll go to Vice Mayor Davis. Is, I mean, Councilmember Davis, sorry. Is my, I kind of on the same path too, because I was wondering, how long does it, is it allowed? I know it's through the COVID time, but let's say it comes forward, you reach out, there's an arrangement, there's an agreement, and let's say we get to that same level again, and now we still have a concern or a delinquency. Is it, I understand it would be in your office to make that decision, but I'm just trying to understand, where do we go with that?
Sure. So again, for the one operator that has fallen behind, we have, we'll continue to work with them and believe that we can have a successful path towards resolution. For any other hotels that fall behind, there will be an immediate outreach when payment is not received, and negotiations for a payment plan or full payment for the month that persists. But going forward, there will not be a willingness to waive penalties and interest if it's not paid, again, because while we want to be compassionate, those are not funds that they are to use for operating costs.
Okay. Councilmember Davis and Councilmember Mason.
This is to allow you the ability to waive penalties starting March 16th when this emergency is over, which is another year? I mean, we don't know, right? I mean, we're hearing some nuts and gizners and some good data, but I would also assume it's not just hotel tax, they're not paying their sewer bill, they're not paying their water bill. I think there's a lot of things to take into consideration, and we really only talked about Lenoelle. So a little bit on the fence on this, but I think what you just said before my question was, let's make sure there's a plan, let's make sure there's outreach, and let's try to get those monies and not let those go too long without getting paid. Yeah. So, yeah, I guess two things. One is which declaration of emergency the cities, the counties, or the states? And then just my second is a comment that I just feel more comfortable saying through December 2020 and then revisiting this in December, just that we have an idea of have more hotels fallen behind, because I don't know, I mean, as of right now, we're hearing that airlines are starting to fill their seats again, they're no longer having the space in the middle, so it feels like at least some business travel may be starting up again. So I would, so I have the question about the declaration of emergency, but I would prefer to make this through December 2020. That gives a good about five months, and we'll kind of, if the council supports it, then we'll see where we are in December.
The manager?
So it's intended to be through the city's declaration of emergency, and with regard to limiting it to December, council can very well take that action, and then we can return for an extension, or you can do it through the declaration of the city's emergency.
I actually like that much better, because I just didn't know how long this is going to go through, and we don't even have to come back in December to approve it, it can come back in February to then waive those penalties that were incurred from January forward, so I like the idea of December, so.
I like having a time element on it as well, personally, as we're doing most of the emergencies, right, where the state is formulating some date to have where it comes Anything else, colleagues? And I see nobody from the audience at this time. This is a resolution, and then there was also in regards to putting it on potentially December 2020, right, to have it expire. Any action?
To the chair?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution with the amendment from Councilmember Mason to set a sunset date on that of December 2020.
I'll second.
Motion made by Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Mason. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis?
On the question, can, can we specify December 31st versus just, right?
Yes.
Thank you. So, yeah, aye.
Council, okay, Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
And Mayor Medina?
Aye, and just for clarification, that was the expired date of December 31, 2020. Assuming that Vice Mayor and Councilmember Mason were okay, is the motion and seconder to that? Okay, thank you. All right, now we'll move on to comments from council members. For myself, there's some committees, and I'll, we'll take one at a time, elaborate, and I know I can get long-winded, so you can put your hand up, and then I'll tell me to be quiet for a moment. First one, appointment to, for a council member on the ad hoc homeless advisory committee, that is one that has not met because of COVID, because usually there's more than a dozen people in Room 115, and we do have an opening at this time. What I'd like to do is I'd like to ask Councilmember Medina if he would be willing to be on that.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. On the next one, on new ad hoc committee appointment, San Bruno Fall Cleanup Event. This is a one-time event. This is, this is something that Recology, we talked about, but with COVID, it was like, well, maybe, and candidly, it was Councilmember Davis who came up with the concept, and it was to have in October a drop-off. So for example, you'd be a San Bruno resident, yes, we'd have to check your ID, you come into the parking lot, if you've got cans of paint that you want to discard, bulky items, that would be allowed during a Saturday morning window. So with that, I'd like to ask Councilmember Davis, your idea, if you would mind taking lead and facilitating that?
Yes, I would, thank you.
And I'll help if need, but I know you're very independent, but I'll be there to assist.
No, I appreciate the help.
If needed.
I, just to comment on that, I, you know, we all have a San Bruno residence, if you pay for the garbage, you have the free two pickups, right? And I thought, we're not utilizing those pickups, let's take that service and offer to the city, and maybe going forward, we can do it a couple of times a year, we offer a location to drop off your garbage.
And like I said, Recology is willing, even with COVID, maybe they were thinking of doing barbecue, hot dogs and stuff, that's probably not going to happen that way, but it can be modified to where it's safe for folks. So, but with all the, as we all know with COVID, there's just a lot more stuff that we're accumulating and that seems to be dropped off, so hopefully this helps. Next one is discuss mayor's proposal for San Bruno Park Committee. That came up from our last meeting, and that was to try to, hearing from the colleagues, establish something that looks broader-based, and then, City Clerk, can you share the document? I know the council got it late, but it was to do that, to broaden that, also to work together so that when we have the November, San Bruno Stands United Against Hate Campaign, it can be collaborated as well, and also planned for that, to increase that for this year. And I would like to ask Councilmember Mason and Vice Mayor Salazar if they'd be willing to serve on that, and if that is something that the council wants to proceed with, then thoughts are to have some representatives from the high school, the San Bruno Park School District, business community, general community, and that is not just limited. So it could be a counselor, it could be a student, you know, from the leadership class, it could be some clergy, it could be that type of stuff that's more collaborative, and then work toward that, and then also the Stand Against Hate Campaign, so that we can encompass it with the youth and the community. Any thoughts or comments on that to my colleagues?
Hey, hold on, I've got to find the raised hand.
Oh, no, go ahead.
It's so much faster. Yeah, I guess my question would be, if we're under the strong governance initiative, would, if we're creating not an ad hoc, but an actual committee, should we talk about it at that time to see if, because we had talked about during the strategic initiatives plan, how we would be looking at all of our committees, are they all still needed? If there are new committees, because Councilmember Medina has brought up the idea of a development committee, San Bruno Cable Committee, and then determining at that time whether we're going to add committees, take away committees. And then in this particular area, we talked at length, I think at the last meeting, around the resolution, which kind of gave rise to this idea, but I don't know that, I don't know that it's its own committee, or that if there's an issue, let's say with equity in hiring or inequity with the police. the police, are there existing committees that that would already fit into? And without the data, I don't know, right? Because, because we don't have any data on it yet. So I guess my, my whole point is just, do we want to create a new committee when we're already going to be looking at our committee structure as it is, as part of the strong governance? So I'm not opposed to it, I just, I'm throwing that out there.
No, 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 thank, thank you for the question. This is a, I would say, an ad hoc committee, because not only are we just doing on this element that we discussed, and I think all of us were kind of looking toward, hey, let's broaden it, but also I thought it could coordinate into planning for November's event as well, so that what, what is learned from the, the gathering and what we can incorporate in November with the, the campaign, the San Bruno Stands United Against Hate Campaign, they can do, they could do both. And then as far as the governance, like you, like some of the colleagues have said about just the reexamination, I would think would be a separate one, or would be done as a collective.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Medina?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, I think you captured most of it. Anything that, that we have an outreach to our community for their input, I think that especially in this case is, is something that's valuable. So, so thank you, thank you for this.
You're welcome, but I'm going to say thank you to everybody, because I think it was kind of a collective coming up with this as well. Okay, with that, we're going to move, go on to discussion of potential safe storage of firearm ordinance. I know that Councilmember Medina and I have, have had communication with Kelly, and this is in regards to the concern of unintentional child deaths from unsecured firearms. And that is something that obviously we've had a transition with the police chiefs. So it needed to get the new chief to review and go over it. And this is still something there, but obviously COVID kind of got a little bit off track. But I wanted to see if the council wishes to even have the city attorney and the PD work on a potential ordinance, bring back for discussion and or action in regards to a potential safe storage of firearms. Councilmember Davis?
You know, everybody's seen the gun store with the consistent lines out the door, so that one believes that our San Bruno residents, there is an influx of firearms in our city. Which could also mean that there is potential for people who are actually storing their guns illegally or in ways that some say is not illegal. I guess one death is too many in San Bruno, so it, I'd like to get some input from the police chief, but I think this, you know, the, the problem with this is that you can have an ordinance, you can put all the rules out there, but how do you police it? We're not going in each other's home. So, you know, is it really a campaign that gets the message out about safe storage? Is that the best solution? I don't know. I don't know what the solution is, but I do think if people don't store it safely, I would assume that that's good. Like consistent across, but just people don't.
There is an educational element to it, and this is not somebody knocking on your door and saying, let me see, or, you know. So I don't want people to fear that, well, the way they, the organization has, it's been more of an educational, cautionary, not somebody's going to walk in and, and ask to see where, where is it stored. But of course, more to the chief and the attorney with their expertise. Thank you. Other questions or whether the, ask staff to, to proceed?
Through the, through the mayor?
Yeah, yes, Councilmember.
I, I received the same email that you probably received from the constituent, and I just haven't had the time that I wanted to look into it. But I just remember, because a couple of years ago, I had to do a research assignment, I believe there's already a firearm safety requirement when you purchase a gun. And so maybe that's something that staff might want to look into, because if I remember correctly, part of the firearm safety requirement is the safe storage of the gun. So if it's already required, then, you know, it might be something that we just want to have some educational material on, because it's already required. But, but I'm not, same thing, I'm not opposed to it, but it may already be a requirement, and I, I believe it actually is a requirement, it would be on the Department of Justice's website if I remember correctly. So, thank you.
Okay, and maybe, Councilmember, with your question, I don't see any other hands up right now. Chief Johansson, oh, I apologize, now I see the Vice Mayor, but if it's okay with the Vice Mayor, if I go to Chief Johansson on that?
Sure, yeah, I'm no, I'm no expert in what a new ordinance might look like, but my understanding of this is, first of all, to Councilmember Mason's point, yes, there are already legal requirements regarding the safe storage of firearms in the home and anywhere else. However, most of those, in order for there to be enforcement, it requires that there be a terribly unfortunate incident where someone is actually hurt with that firearm before there's any kind of enforcement. The theory, I think, behind this particular idea is to make it criminal to improperly store a firearm and make it prosecutable even if there is not someone injured by the improper storage of that firearm. Now, of course, this begs the question of what does enforcement look like? Because as you all have mentioned, we're not going into people's homes to proactively check on whether or not this ordinance would be being followed. However, there are certainly some, some sort of one-off situations in which such an ordinance might be of value in prosecution. For example, if someone's firearm was stolen because they had it improperly stored. Well, right now, we would basically take a stolen firearm report and there, there really wouldn't be anything else really to happen there, because no one has been hurt with that firearm. But the fact that that firearm is now potentially on the street and in the hands of someone that we don't want it in the hands of, is probably the result of it being improperly stored. So just to give you one example of what maybe could look a little bit different with this type of ordinance, and I'm basing that on the, the same email that you guys are talking about here that, that I have seen and read through.
Thank you, Chief. Vice Mayor Salazar?
I, I just wanted to echo some of the same comments that were made, really that it, it would be very hard to enforce something like that. And I think the chief's comments did shed a little light on some of the potential benefits of having that. I know that when we got those emails, a couple other cities here in the county were looking at doing something similar. So it would be interesting to follow up and see if they've implemented anything, maybe even prior to spending a lot of time in, in developing our own ordinance. Definitely the, the safety factor is, is, is huge, especially, I, I think it was Councilmember Davis who, who mentioned all of the recent activity at our local gun store. And, you know, where, while there might be a lot of people that are very responsible gun owners here in the city, when you do have an event like we had, that triggered a lot of people to run out and buy firearms, and possibly not have the proper training and not have the, even the right state of mind, we definitely want to make sure that we're doing anything that we can to ensure safety. And I think education is going to be a huge, huge part of it. But also knowing that there is, that there is a hammer there waiting to, to enforce, you know, making it more than just a, a recommendation, that, you know, that there is some teeth to what we're, we're advising, I think would be important. So I am interested in, in looking into it a little more, seriously.
Okay, so I'm, I'm hearing a majority that are okay with staff trying to minimize work, not duplicating efforts. Maybe I can ask the city attorney, what would be, what, what do we need to do, or what do you need to do to proceed, since obviously it has to do with the law?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. So, it so happens that the next section of the municipal code that I was planning to bring forward is Title VI, and we're already spending a good deal of time on that, and we'll, we'll be spending some time on that in the, in the fall and late fall. So this particular type of ordinance would fit well within that section of the municipal code. There's already a section on firearms in there, so I don't think it would require substantial additional work to bring back as part of that report, some information on it and proposed ordinance language for the city council's consideration.
Hey, thank you. So I'm believing that that would be okay for council as Mark had indicated, looking into Chapter VI, wrapping it together, and as Vice Mayor said, not, not duplicating, not recreating. Okay, item B, Councilmember, and thank you for your patience.
Oh, good to hear.
Yes, Councilmember Davis?
Oh, sorry, just had one more comment. Is there, you know, is the San Bruno Crime Prevention Committee maybe a group that can actually get the message out on gun safety? So in addition to that, you know, getting the message out, the right message, and they can do something annually? Just thought.
Certainly let the, the chief come back since he, they have liaison on, on there, but good point. Thank you. Item B, Councilmember Linda Mason, discuss Measure K funds acquired and needed. Councilmember.
Yes. So I think it's been pretty clear from the county calls that we're on, that Measure K funds are largely being utilized now with COVID, with the COVID emergency. And so my understanding from what I'm hearing is that there is going to be very little left for cities. And, you know, the city of San Bruno has paid into Measure K since 2012, before it was called Measure K, and then it was changed in 2016. But, you know, we really, I, I don't believe we've gotten much of what we've put into it. At one point, I know Councilmember Medina and Mayor Medina requested some funds for the park, and I think that's great. And then there were some funds that were acquired for life moves, I believe in the amount of $117,000. But as a council, we really haven't coordinated to make an ask. There's not enough money, unfortunately, at this time, to make a big ask. So my request, and I should have checked with, with City Attorney Zefrano, but my request would be to have the council support staff to look into how much it would cost to finish up the Posey Park Fountain, to finally clean it up and fix it. I don't believe it would be a huge cost or a huge ask. And bring that back and hopefully make a formal ask of Measure K. Just another low-hanging fruit that we have not had the money or the staff time to fix. And I do believe that, you know, now's the time, I think we have to ask for it, there's really going to be no money left soon. My, my understanding from speaking with our county representatives is that there really will be very little money if we don't ask for the little that there is now soon. So, so that, that's my, that's my ask.
Through, through the chair? I think you're muted, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, it wouldn't unmute me. Smart computer. Vice Mayor Salazar?
I, I just wanted to, to share some thoughts on, on, you know, measure, measure A and measure K, and how it was put to the voters and, you know, we really do get a lot of benefit that's not immediately apparent, because, you know, those, those funds go to fund the county hospital, which is a benefit to us. It houses, it funds the, the county department of housing, which we don't have too many housing projects in, in San Bruno, but, you know, the, the money largely goes to there. It, a huge, huge portion of it went to build the Regional Operations Center, which we, we do benefit from. I mean, all of the, the county calls and all the activities that have been happening since COVID have been housed and, and centralized in that, in that one building, which I, I believe it ate up probably, I would say, half of all of the, the money that's been raised so far. So there really hasn't been a lot of Measure K money that has gone directly to cities. And every supervisor is allocated some amount of discretionary money, starting, I think, with the third year of that tax coming in. And so some of, there, there have been some small allotments that have been given to cities. And so I, I think it's a good idea to identify some projects where we could, you know, put, put some structure around it. They probably would have to be what the city manager sometimes refers to as shovel-ready, so something that we're ready to move on and, you know, we could make use of quickly. But if we can identify some of those, and there are some dollars left out there, then it would be, it would be good for us to come together as a council and prioritize some of those where we want to, we want to seek alternate sources of funding. So just wanted to share that.
So, so just, I just do want to say, I did speak with the city manager, the, this would probably be the most shovel-ready project. We have next to Florida Park, which would have been my first choice, actually, but Florida Park, the city's already working on a grant for Florida Park, and we don't want to take away from that grant. So that's why this is the one that I'm bringing forth tonight.
Yeah, and actually, I hadn't heard anybody bring up the, the fountain in a while, it just kind of got forgotten once they shut the water off, so.
Councilmember Medina?
Yes. There was some discussion, and nothing came of it, to, to look at taking that water feature and getting rid of it with our previous city manager, to put more of a, some plantings there instead of having the water feature, because there were some unknowns of, of the quality of the workmanship on the system. And perhaps putting in some drought-tolerant plants would, would, would be more as, as an example to the community of what can be done with drought-tolerant plants. I love the idea that we should, we should be thinking about this, and I, perhaps when we talk to our city manager, or, or that we could come up with some options and figuring out how much of an ask is available, so we can be a little more focused. I, I, I like the idea of going and getting some of those funds, I just want to be a little bit more, what the options of being able to use those funds for. But that is one of, one of, one of many that, that could be used to beautify the entryway to our downtown.
Any other comments from colleagues? Councilmember Davis?
So can't Measure K funds be used for other things, such as maintaining police services, fire services, even library, keeping programs open for teens or children? So are there, are there, yeah, are there, are there?
They can.
Funds that we can use toward that? And, I mean, especially now with COVID, clean up that homeless encampment, I mean, aren't those things that we could actually put requests in for Measure K fund?
So they can, I did look into that. My understanding right now is that we're talking about a very low ask, like $200,000 or less, and even that will be hard to get. I did speak directly with the representatives. There have been actually a number of cities who had, who have had over the years, direct projects funded by Measure K, as high as, I think the largest one was $12 million, going down to, you know, $25,000, and those are direct contracts with the city. Unfortunately, the likelihood of that happening at this point are very low. And so I did speak with the city manager, like I said, just, and maybe just a day or two ago, so it hasn't been lengthy. But the only shovel-ready projects we really have to quick, to have a very quick turnaround, would be Posey Park and Florida Park. And as stated before, Florida Park is already in the process of a grant application. And the city manager can step in. I just, I want to be clear that I, I have thought of that. I would have loved to make a big ask, actually, for a new fire station, right? The, the extension we have near Skyline. Those are the types of projects that Measure K has funded, but we're really honestly, I think we're late for that at this point.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
I'm curious about the $12 million project. Which, which project was that? What, what city received that funding?
So, Hafman Bay received $12 million for their new library, and $6 million was a loan, and then another $6 million was some kind of, I believe, funding that they had from the city. The total cost of that library was $24 million. And that was at the early onset phase of Measure K and Measure A.
But I believe that library is a county library, it's not the city's library. So the money was, it was county money spent at the county in that case, because.
There, there are a number of cities that have had library extensions as well. So that's a brand-new library, but there are a number of, if you go to the, all the annual reports, I've gone through all the annual reports.
Nice to be in, I'm on the Oversight Committee, that's why I was surprised to hear that there was something that large. But I, that wasn't, that wasn't granted to a city. I, I just kind of want to make that clear, that it's, it's not like if we had shown up earlier, we would have gotten it, because that, that really was an allocation to the county, which is primarily where the big funding goes. Smaller funding amounts are the ones that are discretionary. So, I just want to make, want to make sure that we're not shooting too high, because I don't think that's really what the, what Measure K is intended to do.
Councilmember Medina?
We, could we set up an ad hoc committee of a couple council members to work on? We could be set up an ad hoc committee of a couple of council members to work on that and to investigate that and coordinate some some type of research to come up with an ask and bring it back, some recommendations to the full council.
City manager, let me ask you, because I know Councilman Mason had asked about the quote shovel-ready, what's ready to go. So we're not doing more work, but as as we as we handed it off to Mark on the last one, why don't I hand it off to you on this one?
Sure. May I answer the council? I think the best approach would be for staff to put together a number of options and bring them back to the full city council. The work that really needs to be done to identify the dollar amount of an ask and what work needs to be done is really sort of detailed work between building staff, potentially even talking to a few contractors to get hopes with regard to shovel-ready projects. One of the biggest challenges, and I know the council knows this, is that we really haven't had significant funds to invest in our infrastructure or to do significant capital planning. And so as far as shovel-ready projects out there, like Councilmember Mason said, there's Florida Park. And there was work done on Posey Park that work needs to be looked at again in light of current construction costs. And there were a number of challenges with all of the ideas that were tossed about reusing, reusing that fountain due to likely construction defects. And so we really would need to look into the true cost of that project and potentially others and get guidance. And so if there, if there was a subcommittee, I think the the core amount of work would be identifying options and then bringing those back to the full council for decision. Or you can toss it to staff, and we can put together a number of options and do that work and bring it back to the full body.
I'd rather toss it to staff in the, because of the time. Honestly, I mean, we do not have much time.
Time is of the essence, and we don't meet again until August 23rd.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Marty?
We could, we could put a lot of trees in the ground on in in our avenue. It's it's in the streets skate plan. It's it, our downtown needs some trees in the ground, you know? It's time to start getting off pot in our downtown, right? We got to put some trees in the in the ground. So we've talked about it. It's in the plan. It's been looked at. So so that's one other area. I mean, it'd be great to see some trees. You know, the trees in the pots currently are, they're struggling, you know, they look pathetic and
It's sad.
It's sad. So so let's, right there, let's put some trees in the ground, you know? Shovel-ready, yeah, we've got to break concrete, but but let's put them in, put them in the ground.
Okay, so kind of hearing with the time element that we're under, staff will have to go to you, and then you can bring it back. Will we all in concurrence, council?
Yes, yes.
I'm seeing all heads. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so obviously, we're still under comments from council members. So any final comments from council?
One real quick, just to be redundant, you know, wear your mask, everybody, you know, just don't take any shortcuts, just, you know. We can, the more we we pay attention to this, the sooner we're going to get through it. And because people are not using common sense and science, it's continued continuing to spread. So, you know, get out there, be safe, wash your hands, all that good stuff. We know the drill already. So that I'll I'll leave it, leave it with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Not seeing any. We're going to go ahead and then move to adjournment. The next regular city council meeting will be held on August 25th. I was incorrect. It's 25th, 2020, at 7 o'clock. Again, August 11th, due to our normal process is canceled. We will see everybody on the 25th. Everybody have a good night, be safe. And again, as was stated, social distance, wear your mask, wash your hands. Have a good night, all.
Thank you, guys.